Glenn.
Testing, test, test, test.
Can someone give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? Yes, thank you.
Ashley, can you hear me?
Yes, Bonnie, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I've just got a text message from Councilman Reese that says that he is on the phone so we can...
And I'm on.
Okay, perfect, yep, so I'm gonna go ahead if you are ready, Madam Vice Mayor, and we will get your meeting started.
Okay Doug, I am, hold on one minute. I have all my little notes.
Oh, I can go get my flag, I'll be right back.
You do that, thank you.
Okay, and we also have Councilman Reese on the phone.
Um, Mr. Manager, I have to take an important call, could I have someone else leave the meeting for a minute? It's urgent.
Yes.
Yes, you can do that because you will have quorum otherwise, so we can go ahead and get the meeting started if you would like.
Yeah.
All right, calling to order the special council meeting of March 31st. Our first item on your agenda today is the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Reckus, you have your flags up, so we will go ahead and proceed with pledge.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, with that transitioning to the roll call for the Reno City Council, Reckus.
Here.
Duer.
Here.
Delgado is absent, Weber, she is with us, we know she's muted at this time, Jarden.
Here.
Reese. Can see that he is present, and then also Shivi is absent at this time, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council for the special meeting today.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you, is there any public comment?
Thank you for that, Councilmember Duer, for public comment today, we have no general public comment, we do have one specific to the budget presentation in which we will get to. So with that, transitioning to approval of your agenda, there's only one item today, so there'll be no changes, be looking...
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move Jarden.
Okay, I saw a motion by Councilwoman Jarden, second by Councilwoman Reckus, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously, next item, Madam Clerk.
Thank you with that, moving on to your budget presentations, this is a continuation item as we have been hearing for the last few days. Additionally, for public comment received for item B1, these would be items received after four, excuse me, before 4:00 PM yesterday, we have 110 letters in support. The majority of these are for the Aquatics project, additionally, one letter of opposition, one letter of concern for various items on the budget, these have been submitted to council and are part of the official record.
Okay, and then did we receive any recordings?
We do not have public comment, I'm sorry, we're pulling this up to make sure, I believe we have one voicemail, however, I need to confirm the item that it is on.
Okay, we can come back to that once you determine that.
I do believe we have a voicemail from Chris Anderson, and this actually would have been in the opening general public comment.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and listen to that? We are not hearing it, Ashley.
Okay, if council would like, we can go ahead and just proceed with the budget item, and then we will just make a note of that and come back to it when we do closing public comment today.
All right, great, all right, I'm gonna hand it over to our city manager and our CFO, Debbie Lochner, and you guys take it away.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Duer, members of Council, Doug Thornley, City Manager, for the record, as of yesterday's meeting, you asked for an order of battle, as it were, for the presentations today, and you received one from me and the same one again from, from Bubba. What, on further reflection, though, on the compressed timeline, what I'd like to do is I'd like to take the city manager's office portion of it out of order, and lump it in with finance, IT, human resources, as an administrative services portion of the presentation, and we'll do that at the end, so we'll go Public Works, Utility Services, Municipal Court, City Attorney, Neighborhood Services, City Clerk, Civil Service, and then the admin internal services that I just outlined. So with that, Director Lochner, Director Flansburgh, Assistant Director Koski are here to kick off Public Works and Utility Services.
All right. I will go ahead and share my screen.
And I was just gonna mention for the team, unlike my colleague, the Vice Mayor, I do not have an egg timer here, so I'm gonna have to rely on everyone's timekeeping for now, okay?
All right, I appreciate the opportunity to present Public Works and Utility Services, I did just wanna mention before we kick off today that it seems like in some of these items that we are talking about a manager recommended budget, and I wanna just be clear, we have a manager recommended budget, but we have a management team approved, you know, we met afterwards and talked about these things overall, so I just wanna know that it seemed maybe we're a little fractured, but I really believe that we're not as, we're not that fractured, so I wanna go through this presentation, in Public Works, in reality, Public Works, we consist of several budgets, and we have 116 shown here in the Public Works, Utility Services adds another basically 80s, we have 196 employees total covered within these two areas, the only difference is kinda where the funding is, but a lot of the services we provide, say, capital projects, are funded partially utility services for projects they work on there, or partially street fund, or partially general fund, for instance. We are made up of three assistant directors, the city engineer is one of those assistant directors, Kerry Koski with us today, we have Brian Heller, who's Assistant Director over Maintenance and Operations, our largest staffing area, and then we have Trina McGoon, who is over the Environmental Engineering section, which does comprise the, more in the utility services, and we'll get to that on that budget. So with that, we have our administration, capital projects, and capital projects is, is very broad, so I noticed yesterday in the parks presentation, there were a lot of parks projects that were talked about, a lot of capital projects helps to bid and administer and do quality control for those projects, as well as building projects and our street and sewer projects, Maintenance and Operations, Facilities, Fleet and Streets, we have a Fleet Internal Service Fund, and we have a Street Fund that are separate, and we don't really get into that in this budget presentation today, because we're really kinda focused in on the general fund portion of Public Works, but I do wanna bring that out specifically, and general fund portion of Public Works is Traffic Engineering and Ops, and also our facility maintenance and downtown maintenance. Top accomplishments for last year, they held us to three, so we thought we'd bring attention to these, it's the Nevada Carers Campus, that was a big lift for all the work that was needed to get there and to do it quickly, so the planning, design, and construction contracts with that, and of course, that was a joint project citywide, our Chief Building Official heavily, heavily involved in working closely with them, and as well as our city manager's office, wanted to bring up the COVID-19 response and safety protocols, as for everything, none of us were prepared for these types of things, and we had a lot of work in our facilities, whether that would be our parks facilities, or our City Hall and others, just to get those protocols in place, and then I wanted to highlight the school zone safety audit. The reason I wanna do that is because typically in our traffic engineering, we're doing a lot of citizen calls, but with the pandemic, we had a lot less traveling going on, and so it doesn't really do a lot of good to perform traffic counts and those types of things with, when we have fewer people staying at home and fewer traffic on the road, so we went and took that time to audit all of our school zones and to do a refresh, and we will have those, every school zone will be refreshed before school starts this summer. Major initiatives going forward, we're looking at the Public Safety Center and construction of the first phase, that'll be a very large project for us, we also emphasize our pedestrian safety, and internally, and some things that have been discussed before council, but in regards to our asset and asset database and GIS work, we will be able to improve what we're doing with our, our asset management, and also be able to provide the public, we get a lot of public records requests for utility locations in, specific to the city of Reno, and we'll be able to share that information more readily to the public. Again, in Public Works, this is a small amount, because it's just the general fund portion, but you can see here how things have, how we've evolved, obviously, our budget from last year to this year is smaller, one of the things that we've done is transfer some of the staff that were on the general fund over to Street and Sewer Fund, and having them work on capital projects for the Street and Sewer Fund, anticipating that there will be fewer general fund projects, and that's what we did last year, and that has been held over for the next fiscal year. Additional funding requests, I did break this slide up into two slides, just because this first page is easier to read, this first page is the general fund portion, Maintenance Technician for the Public Safety Center, when we complete that, we'll have a lot, about a doubling of force base, and so we request a maintenance technician, we have some temp salary adjustments that I, that need to be taken care of, just to bring parity amongst our temp employees doing similar work, we had some items with the Clean and Safe Team, so doing, going out and doing some of the cleanup work that we have, that we have been performing, I think you've seen some of those things highlighted in our weekly Public Works updates, getting things done, and I appreciate the feedback I've received from council on those. Also, we had some additional assistance for downtown, and work with our, in our traffic, and, and some other miscellaneous items, we also had a major concern about the amount of work we would have with the Nevada Carers Campus for ancillary services, but I understand that that is going to be something that the county will be taking primarily, primarily work on, and so those were not looked at to be funded, and to be clear, none of these requests have been, are recommended, nor management team concurrence to, for that funding. On the second page, I have the specific request for the Fleet and Street Fund components, so in our Fleet Shop, we were requesting converting to part-time positions to a full-time parts technician, and also a equipment mechanic that was going to be funded partially from an add here in the budget, and also from reduction in outside services, so doing some more of the work in the builds of the new equipment coming in internally. And another temp salary issue we wanna take care of, and finally, we have a traffic signal mechanic position that we requested for our traffic engineering, we had a crash attenuation trailer that we felt was needed for some of our higher-speed roadways as we're out there doing maintenance, specifically the Southeast Connector is, is one that comes to mind, just because of the higher speeds out there, as you're aware, we did raise the speed limit by 10 miles an hour there, and then just some additional equipment for our snow ops, an additional plow truck, we haven't added a plow truck to the city of Reno since I have been with the city of Reno, and that's 15 years, so, and we've grown a lot in that 15 years, so we felt it was important to look at potential for adding that equipment to be responsive for the snowstorms that we get, we don't get them, we, it's not very much time in the overall year, but when we have them, we need the equipment to do the work. And that is all of Public Works, be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Duer, you're on.
Thank you, I know, thank you so much, John, very illuminating in some ways, and then a little bit confusing in some others, in that, again, we have positions and sort of activities mixed up, you know, and priorities, and I get that, I understand why you do that, and then within yours, you also have this separation of Fleet and Street and unlabeled Public Works, and it's hard to know, you know, I know that is very meaningful within your subdivisions, but maybe not as meaningful to us as council, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Thornley, just, you know, when we see it again, I, this is just my personal preference, I don't know if others agree, but it might be handy to have lists of positions and other things, and then, you know, those, those lists, as you might have prioritized them, so it's just a food for thought. Let me start with some questions and just see, Councilwoman Reckus, yes?
Yeah, and you know, to add to that, I think it's also helpful to know where there's vacancies, because that often can provide flexibility to the council, you know, vacancies today, I think, I guess, I did not know that you had raised the speeds on the Southeast Connector, I actually have a request in that of information from the manager about when we accepted dedication of, on that, and I haven't heard back, what, what resource are you looking to, you know, manage that regional road?
Well, so when we're doing maintenance on, on high-speed roadways, and that is, that is example of probably our highest speed roadway, we're just looking at a crash attenuation, attenuation trailer, so you'll notice like on the blunt end of guardrail sections, you'll see a, in that, in that guardrail section, there are separate components, so that if a car hits that front end, it kinda, it helps to quickly decelerate that vehicle, as it comes off, both to prevent damage to the vehicle, as well as to the, the the severity of that damage, I should say, and so this crash attenuation trailer is just basically the same principle, it's so that if there's a high-speed vehicle and it rear ends into the back of where we're doing work like safeguard, where repair, or other work along the roadway, it, it quickly decelerates that and protects our workers and is actually...
Oh, I see, yes, I saw bridge repair on Keystone Avenue Bridge today, looked like it got run over, so I, I saw, and it, they looked very vulnerable and exposed, so I get that, I guess, you know, on the unfunded positions, I have to share with you how I feel, I knew that the Public Safety Center was gonna be a very expensive item, and I knew it was gonna come with a lot of costs, and I didn't think we were ready to do it, and seeing that, bringing on just one maintenance technician to do that, just for that, shows that to me, the hidden costs that weren't explained, but to me, I have to tell you, you know, we want our, our employees to be comfortable in their buildings, but seeing that the pedestrian coordinator, which I think should be a pedestrian planner frankly, embedded in Public Works, is a fourth priority, just doesn't sync up from the perspective I have of what I hear from constituents, they're concerned about safety for all users out in the neighborhood streets, and I'll just let you know, I, I spent yesterday morning before budget on the phone with a Plum Lane constituent, and that road has been shrunk down to, to a road diet, but she cannot get through repeated request, that lowered from 35 to 25, and it doesn't meet whatever standards you have, and I think fresh eyes need to go into these sort of things, and, and I know nationally, there's a movement on fresh eyes, and I think that they're gonna get accelerated under the current federal policy, but you know, how do we tell a person who is so, feeling so vulnerable, that 35 right out of her driveway is the way to go, and I just, I hear these stories all the time on Skyline, just cannot, you know, the, the, a three-way stop across from a park doesn't meet the threshold, I think that for me, I really wanna see you have the resources to look at the street from all users, not an engineering move cars perspective, and you know, while I, I recognize we're not funding that, and frankly, I think RTC should be funding a lot of your needs, and then you can move to other things, but seeing it down as the sixth priority, I, I have to share with you, I mean, I know maintenance and all those items, but from a staffing level, I see, I hear from Ward One constituents, they want new eyes looking on the streets from all users, different perspectives.
Councilmember Reckus, to that point, you know, obviously, we do use the federal standard, we use the manual uniform traffic control devices, and there are several things that are set up with that, just as you mentioned, there is actually, that is going under revision right now, so we are actually reviewing all those revisions and how that might impact, and those revisions can go both ways, so we definitely wanna know and understand that, and it might be worth a future item, just to, to, maybe a member of council or something, just to describe what some of those revisions and potential impacts would have as we get more into that review process.
Yeah, well, maybe that's a time to bring someone on to help you look at new eyes as federal policy makes this shift, and we have to come up to speed with the times.
Let me ask, let me see if any of our other colleagues would like to chime in with any questions? I'm not, I see Councilwoman Jarden has unmuted herself, so did you wanna speak, Councilwoman Jarden?
I did, thank, thank you very much, I just wanted to give a shout out to our Public Works folks that have, they continually do the work that I think we often take for granted, because it's kind of out of sight, out of mind, but so critically important, and I know, John, you have done, excuse me, Mr. Flansburgh, you've done such a tremendous job during, shifting during the pandemic, and then getting some of the critical infrastructure pieces in place at the Nevada Carers Campus at just lightning speed, and, and I appreciate all your efforts and all of your staff's efforts and everything that they've done in that regard in this very difficult year, so just a, just a shout out, and a thank you for always being so professional, and looking out for everybody on the road, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Jarden, and the Public Works updates have just been helpful to highlight those things our staff is doing, and it is our staff, they're, they're just getting, been, been tremendous, so thank you for recognizing that.
Yeah. Um, okay, any, any other colleagues would like to chime in? I'll add a few things, John, I wanna echo those kudos, you know, you have a large group, and they do so many different things, and this has been hard for everyone, and a lot of your staff are public-facing, so they have pretty much had to work through the pandemic, not at home, at desks, for the most part, I mean, some of your staff haven't been able to work at home, but I think for the majority, they are out there with the public, and that has been a challenge for everyone. Couple substantive questions on some of the issues you presented, I had a follow-up on the Southeast Connector, so I don't recall, and I might have missed it, did, have we officially taken over the Southeast Connector, like, accepted it as a roadway?
So the, the road, the road work has been completed, but one of the last things that needed to be finalized was the letter of map revision, which you're gonna be very familiar with, and so it's just getting those final acceptances in place, that everything was built to the standards, so that we can accept it, so I know that that's very close.
Okay, so I remember some number of months ago, we discussed this, and I reminded you that... that a number of the fences had burned down or were in disrepair. And I wanted to assure that we had the proper fencing in place. Do you know status on that?
I will get that status and provide that back to a memo. I know that, as you are aware, we went and met out there, discussed those, and was working with RTC on areas we thought that they, that they needed to take care of as part of that project.
Okay, and one last question. I did support the raise of speed on Southeast Connector with two provisos. One, that we figured out, that we made sure we weren't going to be hitting horses, and many people have seen horses almost coming on the road. So that's been a concern. That's why I'm asking about the fences. But at the same time, I had requested that we lower speeds, and I'd written a memo right when we had the Southeast Connector coming online, and this would be what, three years ago now, maybe? That if we did raise speeds, I was asking that we lower speeds on veterans that is in the area of the residences. So the speed had been 45, and it's become ever more congested. And I think you know the challenges down by the roundabout, down there by Curdy Ranch, which I understand may be getting yet a third facelift or redo. But there's some scary stuff going down there. So I would ask that you take another look at that, potentially lowering. To me, it was a matching, raise it here, but lower it there. Two more things I wanted to ask you about. One is a stormwater program. So I know you're just going out with public engagement, but I didn't know, and maybe you could just recap for us. Are you handling that as a separate unit of your budget, or what are you thinking?
That, that will be next. We'll, we'll cover the utility services next after. And so we'll, we'll go right into that. And I just want to say that you did make that comment about lowering speeds, and that really was a portion of the impetus of doing the South Meadows Traffic Overall Analysis that RTC performed, and where we have a lot of good projects coming out, including a traffic light going in at just south of South Meadows, which will serve that elementary school, the Pollock, Pollock Gottes, Dacus? I can't remember the exact name of the school. So, yeah, it's, and it's, I think it's Long Valley is the, is the intersection with, with veterans.
Right, it is. So the new school to the east, there's a new, yes. And then a question on, so we've covered the traffic. The roundabout is going to be something I'm going to be tracking with RTC, what their plans are there. And I guess most of my other questions were really about the utility. So I think I am done. Let me ask again for my colleagues. I see that, I thought I saw that Councilwoman Weber had rejoined us, but I've not seen her right now. Okay, well, with that, I think, I mean, that's pretty simple, but I think we may be through this portion of your presentation. Do you want to transition?
All right, thank you. So next, into utility services again. Last year, there was this transition, and it kind of got a little bit ahead in terms of where we were at utilities overall. And so there was a separation, basically the sewer fund from the other funds in Public Works. And so that's kind of where utility services came out. And so this year, you're seeing this kind of for, as a, as something new in terms of the breakout. About 80 employee, 80 full-time positions in utility services. It was anticipated for utility services director. We're still kind of going through how this will be, but this org chart that's in front of you today really isn't representative of probably what will end up with the utilities division, only because there's so much overlap with the number of positions that are doing capital projects, the number of positions in maintenance and operations, for instance, as opposed to some of the other general functions that we have. So it'll most likely look different, but certainly want to highlight the functions that we do. And we have a lot of exciting work that's coming forward in this area. So again, there's, there's capital projects. I always like to refer to inside the fence and outside the fence capital projects when we're talking about our wastewater treatment plants. So when we work inside the fence, we are, do most of those capital projects internal to our environmental group. And when we work outside the fence in our right of ways and things like that, those primarily are going through capital projects and under Kerry Kosky. We have our environmental engineering section, and that's a lot of permitting, review of plans coming in for stormwater and other concerns. We have our environmental control group, which is the regulatory side, working with our businesses and ensuring, and also with hazards that result, or we find out there could be from a vehicle accident or from a spill. And then we have our overall maintenance, sewer and storm drain maintenance are also funded within the sewer fund. So top accomplishments, obviously getting the Reno Stead Plant expansion in place, and that's going very well. We also completed our pilot project up instead for the One Water in regards to our advanced water treatment. And that's important because that will inform our, informs our next steps, which we have engaged AECOM, as you're aware, to do some work on that. We will be bringing back agreements with Tom Law and how we're going to split costs and do that. And then finally, you mentioned the stormwater utility, which we're very excited for the direction from council to go ahead and implement. And so starting that public, that process, as you mentioned. Major initiatives going forward are really just those next steps with all three of these areas, completing the construction of the RISWORF, getting the final design, advanced water treatment, and other infrastructure in place in North Valleys for American Flat, and then the stormwater utility funding. And finally, additional funding requests. I took a cue from Jamie yesterday, we had a little bit of time, so wanted to circle those. We do have two positions, a maintenance worker two, maintenance worker one. These are important to us. Our USA locates are directly reflected about the amount of work going on out in the field. Those, that's underground service alerts. And so we only have a short period of time, but from we get the call to when we have to go out and mark where our sewer and storm drain infrastructure is. And so we, we need to make sure we're covering that. And, and again, someone to help with our lift station, with our maintenance technicians. And again, I did put over here, city manager recommended, but management team supported. Again, I just want to emphasize that we were all on the same page, all, all in the same Zoom room, and had this discussion in regards to priorities of what we wanted to bring forward to council for your consideration, based on the information we had from you. And so the items that were not recommended for going forward was a maintenance worker one and three that would run our closed circuit TV van for doing the inspections. We have one, this was the second one. This is just for the staff for that one, only because there are times when we're short-staffed and that the van will have to sit while we're deploying our resources elsewhere. And so that was the total ask here for the utility division.
Okay, Councilwoman Weber, do you want me to keep going for this portion? Or you want, you ready to take over?
I'm ready to take over, thank you.
Thank you.
For you, thank you for, for doing that. I apologize. So are we at the point where there's discussion?
Yeah, so we went through, John has divided the budget so far into two parts, and I think that's all there are. And we already asked questions on part one, and now we're on part two, about to start asking questions.
Right, the utility, so would you like to ask the first question?
I'm sure. Same question that I was ending with, which is, we are starting the stormwater utility. You, you mentioned you have Trina McGroom on, and then I think there might have been another person too, working on this. But is that all you're expecting for this year? Or are you looking to, what else are you planning to do here?
Yeah, so, so we have, Raf, tell us.
Can I interrupt you for one second? Mr. Flansburgh, could you please take down the screen until we need a certain screen?
Yes.
That was much better. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Sorry to interrupt. Thank you. Councilwoman Doerr.
So we had the agreement we brought to council for Raf Tellis. And so we have our consultant onboard that's helping. And then, of course, as far as staffing goes, yes, Trina is assisting in that work, Carrie Lonza. And then you mentioned, you know, another staff person. We did have a promotion with one of our staff, Nick Brothers is a project coordinator. And so we, to associate engineer, so we do have a new person in that project coordinator position. And of course, Teresa Jones, who works with our stormwater permitting. So we, 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 we still have a complement of staff working both on stormwater quality as where, as well as quantity.
So, but on this year, for this budget year, in terms of projects, you had your initiatives, but where do you hope to be, like in one year on this project?
In one year, I hope to be bringing something to council for finalizing the funding and enacting a rate, and then being, being able then to start accruing those funds as we bring you information from our stormwater master planning effort that's going on, and start prioritizing projects to be built.
Okay, okay, I have spoken to at least one or two of the ditch companies saying that I think it would be in their great interest to work with us on this, you know, stay actively engaged instead of ignore it, because, you know, this, this ultimately could affect them positively or negatively if they don't play, play with us, work with us. So there's that, and I'll save my sewage question for round two.
Thank you. Next up, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I had to step out for a moment. I, I had to go talk to someone and just wanted to make sure you knew I was here. But if I repeat, I apologize. So I guess, I see it a little different about the concept of the utility division. And that was a, a charter change. So it was a, or charter change and ordinance change by the council. So we were very hands-on on it. And Ms. Newby, her last action, her last meeting with us, we adopted the utility director position. And then presumably, it's in the utilities division. So, you know, I'm, it's been a year, and I know it's been COVID, and we brought on a new manager. But I think sewer is such a big issue with the expansion in the other North Valleys. To go a year with having an intent to bring up a head there and not have that head of that division, I think reflects not well on our intentions. And I think the council owns it because, you know, we're the ones who haven't, you know, may task the manager with getting that on. So to me, that's critical. And I'll tell you why it's critical. It's critical because since I've been on the council, sewer rates have gone up. I checked before the last, you know, CPI, 34%. And families are struggling with their housing costs. A lot of that's their rent and mortgages, but utility costs are housing costs. And in 2019 fall, we had a workshop, I think I was the only Reno representative that day, just happened to be over at Western Water, where they brought in an expert who talks about big sewer expansions, big capital expansions, our situation. And you can see year-over-year increase and expect that of 15%. That's just the cost of sewer-ing. And for me, not having the clarity of the rate study, you know, going, embarking on an expansion that I didn't support until we knew what was going to be the cost and the effluent, puts us in a very compromised situation. And so I guess, going back to your org chart, if we could look at that, I understand you say, well, when we stand up these two divisions, we'll have some overlap. I don't believe we can afford overlap. I don't think you can have a half-time capital projects manager doing, I don't know, renovations to the public safety building or over in the bowling stadium, and also talking about this complex issues related to sewer design. So it's a little hard for me to see, but you've got an assistant public works director, city engineer, four tenths of a time. You've got a management assistant, five tenths of the time. Senior management analyst, five tenths of the time. I guess you got safety training. I, I mean, I just, I just don't, it, it doesn't reflect to me what I understand the immensity of the task ahead of us. And so this is maybe not so much for you because you're the division director level. It's for my colleagues on the council, and it's the manager, and it's for the finance department. Because, you know, we, we have plans, you have your three goals, they're very big, but I don't see the resources queuing up on that. And so that is very, it, it's problematic to me, frankly. Because I think if it took us a year and we fell behind of getting a director, we're way behind downstream from that person. So I, I don't know if anyone has a reply for that, but I don't see the resources being committed to the sewer function that I think need to go there.
Yeah, so Councilwoman Breckus, to that point, I mentioned, when this org chart was put together, it really was just combed out of all the functions that have sewer funding tied to those positions. And that's why you're seeing those, you know, 0.4, 0.5% on some of these items, based on the, where that work is being performed. I do have a meeting with the manager to kind of go through the sewer and talk about some of those strategic areas of what we, how we want to move forward with this. So I think, I think we'll be able to bring you some clarity on that. I, I won't, I don't want to speak for the manager, so, but we do have a meeting set up to discuss that.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I'll wait for round two.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jordan, did, have you spoken yet? And would you like to? Apparently not. And I would like to say.
Thank you.
Oh, 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 you're, are you there? Did you say nothing?
I'm, I'm here, I couldn't get my thumb quick enough to unmute myself. No, I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I'd like, just like to say, Mr. Flansburgh, I think that it's pretty well explained, and I do believe that your org chart and the 5% and all that is pretty explainable about, it's the other half of what Public Works is doing. And it just makes, this just makes sense to me. So I appreciate all the hard work, and I think that will be what I have to say. Just appreciate you and your department's utility services is a major part of Public Works. So let's go back to Councilwoman Doerr and round two. Thank you.
So before I forget, I really wanted to give a shout out to Carrie because I think she's been doing a magnificent job as a city engineer. I really, really do. You know, she's one of the nicest people I've ever worked with, frankly. And I know it's isn't about personalities and stuff, but she's very, very accommodating, and she's very, very knowledgeable. So it's a great combo. That said, I'm going to make an ask of her. How'd you like that setup? So I'm going to make, I, I meant to do this privately, but we're here, and this seems to be a moment. But I know on Audi Boulevard, we are, we're deconstructing, reconstructing, working with RTC on stuff. And I'd love to talk to you later just about the future of that overpass on Audi, unless somebody else has already talked to you about it. But I'm just putting a marker there, just because I'm seeing you right now. But on sewage, I'm going to go back to that. So here's my challenge, John, and I might have brought it up earlier, but I'm starting to have projects in Ward Two, similar to what Councilwoman Breckus went with in Ward One, when she had a project over on Grove, but it was blocked up because there wasn't enough sewage capacity, as I recall, going under 395. And it was quite a job, as I recall, to kind of clear the way, to have that renovation or the affordable housing or whatever project we were trying to do over there. And I'm starting to have some of the same. I have an affordable project that's trying to come in and doesn't have a clear sewage path down to Tom Whorf, you know, no room in the pipe. And yet, up the street, there's one, they have a town hall tonight, and they said, yeah, no problem. There wasn't any problem. I mean, literally, it's about, I mean, probably one block, one, one to two blocks away. I guess I would say, I know there's lots of paths. Maybe they can come down to Moana and intercept with something else. Whereas the other one's south of Moana, excuse me, north of Moana. So they have to go a different direction. But I guess I'm just wondering, these are older areas of town. We've been pushing a lot of infill. I know you have the, the projects to replace sewer pipes and renovate them. And I just, I don't have a very good understanding of it, so I would love to get that offline because I don't want to take everybody's time. But I know that in my ward, within a, I don't know, think about it, probably a four or five-block area from McCarran to Moana, there's at least, there's probably five projects right now that I have going, that people want to come in and bring in townhomes, other townhomes, apartments, affordable housing, all of this stuff. And this is built-out infrastructure. And so I'm just, I feel like it's something we really need to be prepared to talk about since we've been pushing the infill question. Any thoughts today?
No, that's a, that's a great question and segue. And there's a location that had a grocery store. And now they want to densify and build a lot, you know. Well, grocery store may have a couple bathrooms, some drains, you know, it's pretty small use. And so it was at the beginning of the sewer service, if you will, top of the hill, whatever you, for that little portion of the hill. And so it's really in our, our small diameter pipes. So when we're seeing groups, groups come in to, to build and densify, if we only have a, if we only have a six-inch pipe out there or something, because that's what was, was in the road, because it was the beginning of the sewer where it was being fed to, then, then we don't have the capacity in that six-inch line. So it has to be increased in size. Downstream from those, in the situation you bring up about going under 395. Downstream from those, in the situation you bring up about, uh, going under three ninety-five, we had to build a parallel system under three ninety-five and do a board jack. And get that all in place because it was just a large area. Those are less common for us to have than, than these small areas. And so, um, I do think it's an issue and we are working with, um, our GS manager, Carrie Posky, uh, is working, uh, with Dustin Waters and Greg Johnson, our, our TIS. Uh, analyst and we are, we are definitely coming down to that point. Uh, of looking where these locations are, uh, and where those are happening. But it is usually that small diameter pipe that's at the beginning of a sewer shed.
Okay, so just wanted to daylight that issue and, and hope that we can address it because it is going to. You know, people aren't going to be able to move forward and I get that, you know, but redeveloping this vacant scolaries that's been vacant for like fifteen years. Uh, would be a great thing, I think.
Thank you, Councilwoman Doer. Thank you, Mr. Flansburgh. Uh, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, I mean, I want to keep it really high level. But in that high level, um, you know, landscape. We have a very complex sewer situation in this valley and I've, I've spent a lot of time thinking about it. And it's getting increasingly complex with the commitments of the council out into Cold Springs. Where we've got joint, you know, ownership under the county again, much like Stom Wharf. Where we have an agreement to sewer to Stom Wharf managed by the county, but it's a very upside down agreement that brings incredible inequity. There's an equi- inequity across the board in terms of what we suck out for stormwater and that's why we need to stand up the stormwater utility. And that's what hits people's household costs. Then we have the joint plant, the big one, which is old, but managed with Sparks, which has its own issues. On the Truckee River, which has its own issues also. And then we have Sted, where we're expanding, we don't even know how we're gonna go there. So it is just, there, everyone is different, everyone is complicated. And I just want to emphasize to the greatest extent possible that the org chart that I saw. Does not to me reflect the complexity of the task ahead of us on the expansion, the policy issues, the fiscal is- issues and the collection system in any way. And the council, I think, needs to own that we've allowed, you know, we had an intent to stand up that position for a year and we haven't. But I'm not seeing an org chart that reflects understanding of the complexity of the job ahead of us. And so if I don't see that in May, it's gonna be a real problem for me because I think, I, I, I mean, we're down to hundreds of units up instead. It's not a good landscape and we have a big lawsuit pending. We've been fighting for three years there.
Thank you. Uh, did you want to respond, Mr. Flansburgh?
I would just say that, um, I, I actually, there's a lot of information coming together on all those things you just mentioned. And really what's going to be helpful to me is having some time with the council members, uh, maybe in chunks. To kind of go through some of those items because they are complex. Uh, just like the last Western Region Water Commission meeting where we had a, a proposal came forward. Getting in front of you and having an opportunity to discuss some of those items in the big picture things would be a great help to me. So appreciate that opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't see Councilwoman Jordan's hand raised. Um, I, I'm not gonna even comment. So, um, thank you very much. And, uh, is there anyone else that needs to speak or we've, we've covered this and so I think we can move on.
Um, I, because I think we're only at four and, um, I presume Ms. Jordan is present and even though I can't see her, I'm gonna step out. For a few minutes. I have to do that. So I'm breaking quorum, but I want everyone to see that I am not here. Um, so I apologize. I'll be back when I'm back.
All right, Madam Vice Mayor, based off of that informa- yeah. Madam Vice Mayor, based off of that, we do need to go into recess as we have broken quorum. At the time in which we have quorum returned, we will come back to our meeting.
Thank you.
We, we had to take a recess because we had no quorum. So, um, I don't know where the others are at this point. It, it looks like, uh. Harden is not on the phone, so we still do not have a quorum. Unless she is off my screen here somewhere.
He's reconnecting right now.
We, we all have to do it from time to time, Jenny.
I'm here.
Okay, we can go ahead and call your meeting back to order. At this time, we will be transitioning to the presentation for your next department, which is the municipal court. We have Steve Tuttle available to give you a brief presentation and answer any questions for council.
Thank you so much.
And while we're moving him over, Madam Vice Mayor, if I can just correct the record. I was looking at the public comments for yesterday and I did want to correct that we did receive seventeen letters for today's meeting, all in support of the Moana Springs Aquatic Project. Those have been submitted to council and are part of the record. So that's just correcting for item B one today.
And Ashley, those are in addition to the hundred that you told us?
That is correct. Those are in addition to the hundred and ten received for yesterday's meeting.
Okay, Mr. Tuttle, are you there?
All right, Steve, on our end, we can see that you are present. We've, uh, submitted the buttons to ask you to unmute and start your video. Should be able to see all of that on your end. You're unmuted on ours.
There we go.
Steve, you're still muted, but we can see your screen at this point. So you just need to unmute.
How about that?
You are present. Floor is yours.
Okay, first of all, I apologize for my inability to share a screen. So hopefully we will, uh, we will do a little better from here.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
First of all, thank you and, uh, good afternoon. For the record, my name is Steve Tuttle and I'm the administrator at Reno Municipal Court. Reno Municipal Court is a busy, four judge, limited jurisdiction court supported by forty-six highly skilled professionals. We process more than twenty thousand traffic and criminal cases each year. The court also maintains a specialty court docket with five distinct agendas. These long-term court-sponsored treatment programs supervise an average of one hundred and forty participants a year. And aids in their recovery from drug and alcohol addictions. The core services of the court, judicial proceeding, this is the court's primary function and ensures the timely and impartial adjudication of misdemeanor crimes. Traffic offenses, city code violations and administrative appeals. Program and service management is another key function. It accounts for the planning, coordination. And management of the various resources, including personnel and funds that are necessary to operate the court in a cost-effective and efficient manner. Specialty courts. This is a function to manage specialized problem-solving treatment programs. That help individuals break the cycle of addiction that lead to criminal behavior. And the court's final core service is judicial enforcement. This requirement is to actively monitor and take appropriate actions to ensure individuals meet the obligation of their court-ordered sentences. Historically, it has been proven that close supervision significantly increases the compliance and reduces the possibility of reoffending. Getting to the core of the presentation, the court's top accomplishments. By utilizing CARES funds, the court was able to accelerate and, and complete several large projects. The first project was upgrading the court's case management system. The upgrade now allows the court to batch scan incoming documents, automatically file and date stamp the articles. Immediately route the correspondence to their appropriate judicial department. And permits the judges to electronically sign the documents affirming their decision. The second major project was the development of a mobile application. This application is equipped with embedded court forms and payment services. The application, which has the same look, feel and functionality of the court website, was modified to fit on smaller screens. The mobile app, which is primarily targeted to the younger population, allows them to use their cell phones to view up-to-date court information. Accessing complete online forms and electronically file these forms with the courts. And since the mobile application is linked to different payment services such as PayPal. Individuals can now use their phones to pay their outstanding file financial obligations. The third accomplishment for the court was upgrading the technology used in the courtroom. Reno Municipal Court conducts multiple trials each day and the vast majority of the evidence presented during these trials is paper documents. In the past, whenever documents were introduced to the court, they were passed from one attorney to another, then to the witness, then to the judge, then to court staff. A single document would change hand five or six times by, while being inspected. And if the document was contaminated with an infectious disease, the entire courtroom has now been potentially exposed. To minimize the number of people handling the exhibits, the court upgraded its evidence display capabilities. All court, all case documents are now scanned into a shared drive and presented to the courts electronically. A series of monitors and switch boxes were installed in each courtroom. These, these devices allow the exhibits to be privately and in the correct order, thus maintaining proper courtroom decorum. Hard evidence such as drug paraphernalias and weapons are handled by one person using latex glove and presented to the different party in proper sequence. After physical examination by the parties and admitted by, as evidenced by the court. The exhibits are then placed on a portable Elmo projector for courtroom viewing. Reno Municipal Court's major incentives and strategies for the coming year. The court's first incentive is to maintain a model court environment. We define a model court as one that other courts want to emulate. Reno Municipal Court is such an institution. For example, while other courts hunkered down and just tried to weather the economic downturn during the pandemic. Reno Municipal Court uses this time to retool. The court upgraded its case management system, its courtroom technology. And developed and tested a mobile application as well as enhanced many other online services. The second goal for the year is to continue to expand the use of technology. Over the past several years, whenever the court has faced new challenges, we first looked to technology to help resolve the issues. We have been able to keep our operating costs down and our request for additional personnel to zero by u- by utilizing technology to a greater extent. We will continue to look for creative ways to use technology to enhance our services. One such enhancement is expanding our remote drug and alcohol testing. The court has purchased several mobile breathalyzers that can easily be attached and removed from probationer cell phones. When alerted, these individuals are required to complete a remote preliminary breath test. The results of the test are automatically sent to the supervising marshal using cellular technology. If the results of the test indicate a need for an intervention, the supervising marshal immediately makes contact with the probationer. The third goal for, and possibly the fastest growing, is the specialty court program. Reno Municipal Court is committed to the specialty court game plan. We believe if we break the cycle of addiction early at the misdemeanor level, then we will save significant time and money by not having to deal with repeat offenders. The estimated cost for an arrest is more than eight hundred dollars. This includes officer's time in the field, transportation to the jail, booking and housing the defendant for a single night. People who are placed in the specialty court program are usually repeat offenders. On average, these individuals are being arrested three or four times a year. During this past year, Reno Municipal Court was able to secure an additional one million dollars in federal grant funds. For the ongoing maintenance and support of all of these programs. By keeping with, by keeping our budget flat and not requesting any additional funds or personnel, the court hopes that these actions demonstrate its commitment to continue to work with the city. And support to the best of its ability, the difficult decisions that need to be made during this budget cycle. With that, that concludes my presentation and I will now answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Can you, um, bring your screen down? Thank you.
Yep, did I, are we there?
You're, we're here.
Okay.
And except for we can't see you.
I don't.
There you are. You're there. You're there. Thank you. Councilwoman Breckus, did you want to start?
Um, I just have one question. Um, Mr. Tuttle, do we still own that? Um, and thanks for the presentation and give our best to the judges. Um, do we still own that one shell? Um, floor of the court that's unfinished out? Floor of the court that's unfinished out?
Yes, actually, uh, we still own half of the third floor. We have two shelved courtrooms up there that are, are used for storage and other.
Okay, I was hoping when you said you use CARES Act money for something, it would have been for, for that. But I don't think the council's of a mind to add two new, um, you know, seats. I really hope that, um, and we're going to talk about City Hall, but I really wish we could do a space utilization, um, uh, you know, thought and look into that property. Mr. Thornley, were you aware that that was in our inventory?
It was not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Duer.
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Tuttle. I know this has been, as we've said with others, just an incredible period. You made the point, um, you know, the things you've done during the pandemic that distinguished your court from some others. Um, and I know, you know, you guys made extensive use of Zoom and you went back to in-person quickly. And I just, you know, commendations to you and, and the team of judges over there. Um, I don't, I understand what you've asked for. I'll be interested to see, uh, what the manager has to say. One thing I don't know, just strategically or I guess structurally, is, is the whole court funded by a combination of general fund? Do they have, for example, you know, tickets or, you know, any other sources of revenue, let me put it that way, besides just straight general fund?
You know, our funding actually comes from three different sources. The primary sources which pays for the operation of the court itself comes from general funds, uh, provided by the city. The court is allowed to maintain certain administration, administrative fees for citation that, that is put into, to, to certain accounts. We call them AA accounts. And they are meant for the court's purpose to enhance technology, training of court staff, and some courthouse improvements that, that we are available to. And then the third source of funding is we get quite a bit of funding, probably now close to with the, the new grants that we are bringing in, I'd say a little over six hundred thousand dollars for, um, specialty courts. That, that money, but that is all earmarked for the specialty court.
Right. Well, I understand, um, you know, many of our budgets have complex funding sources. I'll, I'll use the arts, for example. They have general fund, they have, uh, grants, they have donations, they have room tax. You know, there's many sources of funding and then it all goes into one pot and then they figure out how to do it. And I, I think it would be, um, more transparent for us, you know, in a future time, to just understand that the breadth of, uh, what you're dealing with. So you have seven million some from general fund, and you said about six hundred thousand from grants and then some other funding. Anyway, I just think that would be interesting to know. And, and this is, I guess, a note to Mr. Thornley. I mean, I probably should have asked that question in other budgets too. I mean, um, we, we are not just allocating general fund here with our budget. We, you know, we're allocating all of it, whether it's a revenue bond. I mean, in other words, special revenues, whether there, it's, um, uh, special districts that have revenues, whether it's grants. You know, we approve it all. So I just think it's good just, um, going forward to think about, um, a picture of the budget that shows all of that together, you know, what percent. And then for each department, just, you know, um, an additional page might be to, to show their revenue sources, you know, just for future time. So, thank you.
I respond quickly. You know, I want to point out that at least eighty percent of our budget goes to salary and benefits. We do have light item for services and supplies. The majority of that, eighty percent of that budget goes out to contracts such as the legal defenders or interpreters or, or, uh, case management, uh, vendors. So we operate with a very small operating.
Right.
So.
Yeah, don't, don't interpret this as any kind of, uh, positive or negative comment either way. It's just, uh, just full information so that we ha, just have the best understanding, you know, of your world, which you live every day, and we don't. So I just, that's all. It's just a, it's just a good, um, let's call it process or procedure or practice is really what I'm getting at.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there another round? Do we need another round? I don't think so either. But thank you so much for being here, Mr. Tuttle, and keep up the good work. And as Councilwoman Breckus mentioned, please say hello and thank you to our judges and staff.
All right, Madam Vice Mayor, with that, we will now transition to your next presentation, which is the City Attorney's Office, in which Carl Hall is present and will give you his brief presentation.
And ready to go.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Madam Vice Mayor, City Council members and staff. Good afternoon. For the record, Carl Hall, City Attorney. See if I can share my screen. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So the City Attorney's Office has twenty-nine full-time employees. So we've got, um, three different divisions, the civil division, the criminal division, and risk management. Um, we've got eighteen attorneys and support staff, including administrative support and victim advocates. Our core services in the civil division would be provide legal services, establish client relationships, resource efficiencies, employee enhancements. In the criminal division, we provide arrest warrant services, arraignment and trial services, victim witness services, grant program services, community outreach and training, and traffic arraignment. In the risk division, we administer the risk fund to work on exposure reduction, pursue recoveries, and insurance coverage. Um, and I'd like to mention, you know, that our staff has done a great job in adapting to working remotely. They've been very productive, and they've been able to provide all the core services to our different departments. And I'd also like to thank, you know, finance and IT for facilitating our remote work and all the other departments for assisting us in providing those core services that they expect and deserve. Our top accomplishments was, um, advice and guidance on the city's COVID pandemic response, acquisition and development of the Governor's Bowl and Nevada CARES campus. Again, I would, you know, like to congratulate Arlo Stockham for all his hard work and public works for all their hard work. I also like to recognize Jonathan Shipman, uh, for his great work in that effort. We resolved the Kathy Woods versus the city. And I would also, you know, like to mention that we were able to get approximately a million point four in insurance funds to aid us in resolving that case. Our major initiatives and strategies for the upcoming year would be assist community development, revise and update selected sections of Title eighteen, address anticipated increase in civil litigation caseload, and aggressively prosecute DUI, domestic violence, graffiti, and nuisance cases. You know, additionally, I think we're, we're going to be tasked with dealing with the, um, our unsheltered population. And we look forward to resolving that in a way that everybody, um, is looking forward to, um, housing those folks and, and getting them off the streets. Financially, we basically have a flat, uh, budget, and, uh, we're not looking for any additional, uh, positions. And, and with that, I'll take any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Can you take your, thank you so much. Councilwoman Breckus, are you ready?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Carl for the presentation, and I'm, I'm so glad to hear how positive, um, the work from home has been for your office. So I think that's really good to know. So, um, I, you said your office administers the risk fund? I thought that was our risk manager who administers the fund.
It is, it is the risk manager. We have in the past administered it, but now that we have Michael Payne on board, uh, which is a great addition to the team. Um, so, you know, we look forward to working with him and, and, uh, reducing our risk exposure.
Yeah, your support, just like you support the other departments. Okay, thanks for that clarification. I guess, you know, you mentioned, oh, I'll let you get that.
Let me just.
Go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, no worries.
Okay.
So I guess the, the issue is, um, you know, increased civil litigation cost load. I would like to do a little deeper dive into this last year, your ser, services and supplies budget, to understand how many are pencils and pens and legal pads? And how much is services related to litigation? I think it helps me understand a full picture of litigation costs that I haven't seen before because your signing authority is up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And at any given time, I don't know, you know, which litigation is running a tab higher than others. And short of having your services and supplies budget, you know, moved into council, you know, because you're defending the council and, and going through that, um, I think I really just would like some more information to understand, as you said, the cost of civil litigation. So I'm going to ask Mr. Manager and Ms. Lochner, um, for, you know, the next round, to go through your civil litigate, your services and supplies budget for the last year and let us know how much a litigation expense was coming out of that, just for a snapshot. I see it's being decreased from three seventy to two eighty-four. And I presume a lot of that has to do with the good job that, you know, the Kathy Woods defense is not, um, you know, that, that was a lot, that was a lot of services and supplies expense, correct?
You know, probably not. I mean, I don't think that was a lot of services and supplies expense. A lot of services and supplies would be in, um, you know, depositions, um, and other cases. And in that case, it was just, uh, reviewing a lot of paper because we had to go back to the trial and, you know, retrieve all of those records. So, um, that's where we, yes, we spent a lot of time, um, on that case. But typically, our, our budget on services and supplies is not, uh, we didn't spend a lot of money on that.
Well, are you going into the risk fund for some of the, if you need experts and co-councils, are you going to the risk fund for, for that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to see also how much, you, you know, we'll get to risk because I, I'm not even sure where that lives, although I'm thrilled to have a risk manager like everyone. Um, I'd just like to understand the snapshot of litigation costs. Um, so. Wherever it lives, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Duer.
Yeah, I have, um, maybe, why not, an out-of-the-box thought here. Um, you were mentioning about the litigation, and I'm pretty aware of it after the last, you know, it's my seventh year. We, we seem to be, a lot of people like to sue us and we also sue others. Um, I am wondering, um, if there would be any benefit to when we have a position come open, maybe reclassifying it as a mediator. And where I'm trying to go here is I'm thinking about the various litigation that the council members, you know, will get involved and by your side to try to resolve. And one that comes to my mind, um, which just got resolved a couple of years ago, we were sued by some neighbors, um, at the break between Ward one and Ward two on Horseman's Park, when the Parks Department decided that they would like to put the park to use and they leased it out to a great group, uh, the Center for Adaptive Riding. And, but they just did it, right? It wasn't like council action, they just leased it up. And the neighbors were really upset to suddenly have horses there, even though it's called Horseman's Park, but horses hadn't been there for a long time. And they wanted to build barns and so on and so forth. And we were sued by the neighbors, um, over this action, and it went into a settlement. And, um, I happen to be the council member that was asked to participate in the settlement. Um, there was a mediator, uh, Margaret Crowley, and she was awesome. Uh, but she can only do so much, right? She, she could say, hey, what about this? What about that? And, uh, what happened there? And just as a little example, so after we had the day, and, and of course, we, we didn't really make any progress, right? Because the residents are still upset, the people are still there, nothing's really changed. Um, to, to change the dynamic, what I did was I went out with the Center for Adaptive Riding, visited all the local parks, right? The, the county parks, city parks, any park, a state park, looking for another home. Um, ultimately, we were able to, um, so then we, those didn't work. So then we went to, I said, maybe you need to get a piece of property. And I actually arranged a pro bono attorney for this nonprofit who worked with them. Um, they actually worked out CCNRs, were able to buy a property that pro bono attorney saw it all the way through to actual acquisitions of the property. And just last week, or within the last ten days, he closed. And this is a process that's been going on for about three years. And this is just, I think, emblematic of what we end up getting involved in sometimes. And I just wonder, I mean, obviously it took a lot of my time. I went and visited all the parks and did the things. But I just wondered if sometimes it's either something we do, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Manager, a different way to approach a thing, like maybe if we hadn't leased the park that way, maybe gotten public input, we could have avoided a lawsuit. Or maybe when we found out about it, instead of kind of going to, to battle, we have to respond. I mean, we've been sued. So I just wondered, you know, is there a different process, some intermediary process, sort of like they've done at the courts, where they have specialty courts, where people have special knowledge? Is there a way, um, you know, to try to head these things off of the past? So maybe it's either the, the behavior that we do with the city and how we think about what we do impacts neighbors and how they might respond, i.e. sue us. Or is there a way, would it be helpful to have our own mediator? I don't know how big of a problem this is, right? If mediators would help. Or is it all, maybe we just keep using contract mediators like a Margaret Crowley, but they do have quite a bound on them. I mean, they can go out looking at parks and, you know, looking for out-of-the-box kind of solutions to the problem. So do you have any thoughts about this? I'm, I'm just brainstorming here.
You know, I know in, in just about every case we have, a mediator gets involved at some point in the litigation. Um, to hire one full-time to try and evaluate cases, I don't know that that is necessarily, um, cost-effective. But, I mean, I'd like to explore it and.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Maybe, maybe I really should have been asking for maybe a person like an ombuds person. You know, maybe not a mediator, but maybe someone, you know, that could help head some of these things off of the past. That's what I'm asking, I guess, in a way.
Well, I can tell you, we always look for, you know, solutions to a problem before we spend a lot of money litigating. So, um, we're definitely taking those comments, uh, to heart and, and look for, you know, solutions prior to spending a lot of money in litigation.
Well, it, it's, so here's the thing. I mean, we have people on staff and we're going to fight. You know, we're going to have our attorneys fight those cases and you're there and you're going to put in as much time as it takes. And, and I know that you guys work very hard. Um, the council members that end up getting involved, they're going to work hard too. Um, I just wonder, I mean, this is the first time I've thought about it, maybe only a second. I think I thought about it when I first came to the city and I saw how much litigation we had. And I'm not really thinking about it again to right now, and I'm wondering, something for you, Mr. Manager. Is there a role, uh, even at Tomah, we have a contract ombuds person who resolves a lot of issues, uh, over bill paying. Three of us who are on this call today, Councilwoman Jordan, myself, and Breckus have experience. We hire that person every year. Um, and they kind of take settlements of issues offline without getting into litigation. So it's just, maybe it's not a full-time position, maybe it's a contract thing, I don't know. But maybe it could help us reduce the amount of litigation. So I'll just end it there, just a thought.
Thank you, Councilwoman Breckus, uh, Duer. Thank you so much. Great comments. Um, I don't know if there's another round that's not needed. Um, so I think we'll move on.
Jordan is unmuted, so maybe she wants to speak.
That's true. Uh, Councilwoman Jordan, did you wish to speak?
I did. Thank you very much. And I, I will be brief. And thank you, um, Councilwoman Duer for catching that. I, I'm never sure if I should just chime in or put my little yellow hand up or maybe I'll do both.
Yellow hand, future.
Okay, okay. You can see the yellow. Okay, good. I'll do that. Um, thank you very much. And, uh, I appreciate all the work that you've done. And, and I thank you very much for calling out, um, specifically the work that Jonathan did, um, on the Nevada CARES campus. I think we, uh, we've, we've been on the appreciation tour right now on some of the work that a number of folks did on pulling that together in a short amount of time. And whether it was the acquisition and the relationships with Endot and moving that process along, which could have been. which could have been bogged down for much, much longer, were it not for your great work and relationships with NDOT. And were it not for you navigating us through some potentially sticky legal situations and and acquiring the property next door to the governor's pole. Um, none of that would have happened without all of your work. And I know you guys just spent a tremendous amount of your effort and energy and professionalism to get that done. So just thank you, uh, for all of that on top of all of your regular job. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Appreciate it.
Thanks a bunch. And so we'll move on and, um, Mr. Hall, it's great working with you and we appreciate you so much in your department and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor and City Council Members. It's a pleasure working for you and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, Madam Vice Mayor and Council transitioning over Rebecca Venus, Director of Neighborhood Services for her presentation on budget.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Breckis, did you want to comment on something before we get started?
I was just waving goodbye to Mr. Hall.
Okay, thank you so much. This, Ms. Venus, how are you? Thank you for being here and take it away.
Good afternoon, Rebecca Venus, Director of Neighborhood Services for the record. And let me make sure I can do my share screen here for you. So give me two seconds.
Okay.
And want to make sure you guys are, if you're seeing the full screen of the slide or if you're seeing the PowerPoint screen.
I think we're seeing the PowerPoint squeak, screen.
Let me correct that really quickly then. I apologize. How about that one? Are you seeing the full screen, that one?
That's good.
Okay, just want to make sure I get it set up correctly for you. Um, as I had mentioned earlier, Rebecca Venus, oops, sorry, I've got the wrong thing popping up there. Um, Rebecca Venus, Director of Neighborhood Services for the record. I'm here to quickly present for you an update on, um, the neighborhood services and our budget for the coming year. I don't know why this keeps popping out on me. I apologize. I'm going to try one more time with this to correct it. It keeps, it keeps flipping around on me. And then after that, I may have to pass this over to the clerk for some assistance on this one. Try one more time. Okay, and how about that? Are you able to, are you seeing my notes slide or the other one?
That looks right, yes.
I want to ask the clerk, clerk, do you have my presentation or do I need to keep trying to figure this out?
We will figure it out for you. Give us just one quick second.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I apologize for, um, the confusion on getting this going. And while they they switch to ours, I'll give you really quick, um, background and update on neighborhood services. As many of you know, the Neighborhood Services team was stood up in March of 2019 and it brought together, um, the services of the Office of Communications and Community Engagement, Parking Enforcement, Code Enforcement, and the Parking Permits and Fees. Um, our mission really is to facilitate communication between the city and our residents while also working to enhance the quality of life for residents by connecting them to resources and services within the city. Um, while many departments have been impacted by COVID here at the city of Reno, um, I can say the Neighborhood Services team, um, has not only been impacted by COVID, but we have taken on a significant workload as it relates to COVID. Um, back on the the previous screen, and I do apologize really quickly, uh, our department does have 28 full-time employee positions and one intern that works with our code enforcement division. Of those 28 positions, um, we had six of them open for most of the past year. A couple of those positions opened up at the beginning of the pandemic and were put on hold and then also not able to fill due to some budget constraints. Um, but we have been able to, um, beginning this year, uh, fill four of those six open positions. So right now, the only two open positions we have currently are for a code, a senior code enforcement officer and a code secretary. On the next slide, um, our department is really broken into two key divisions, the first being enforcement and compliance, which is comprised of our code enforcement team and our parking enforcement team. And the second division, which is communications and community engagement. And this is comprised really of our front-facing, um, communications team, which is Reno Direct and our community liaisons, as well as our, um, community or our, uh, public relations and marketing team, which makes up more of our mass reach out outreach. On the next slide, this is really the slide I wanted to spend a little more time with you this, um, for this presentation. And that's really, um, I do want to start by recognizing the work of the Neighborhood Services team over this past year. Um, we really, a lot of people don't understand, you know, that the department is more of a behind-the-scenes type of operation and a lot of people are not really aware of all that goes into code enforcement, parking enforcement, and communications. Um, with the pandemic, every part of our department has had to join in and support our regional COVID response. Um, we've not been able to do just our jobs. We've had to take on additional work. Uh, to give you an idea of what some of that has looked like, um, this year, the code enforcement team, Alex Woodley, who oversees our code enforcement and parking enforcement divisions, also leads the regional enforcement team that is handling the mitigation and compliance of the governor's orders. Our code enforcement team, in addition to closing 3,300 cases, they were able to conduct hundreds of party house operations to support the governor's orders and support our business license team in conducting over 10,000 business inspections related to those orders. Um, in addition to that, our parking team dealt with some challenges early in the pandemic. We lost one of our parking enforcement, um, officers and we lost our SAVE Officer program. A lot of people don't realize the SAVE Officer program, which is our senior auxiliary volunteer effort. Um, because of the fact that they are senior volunteers, we had to put a hold on that program early in the pandemic. And they do most of the initial outreach when it comes to parking and abandoned vehicle issues. So, uh, that team had to overcome having lost an enforcement officer pre-pandemic, along with having lost that SAVE Officer support. In spite of that, they still responded to over 8,700 service requests related to abandoned vehicles and parking concerns. They issued over 6,000 violations and collected just under $350,000 in parking revenue. And then the final team that I think has probably been also most impacted by the pandemic really is our communications and community engagement. When the pandemic first hit and we moved into a remote environment, our communications and community engagement team had no choice but to go straight to remote. There was no break or pause, um, and immediately begin supporting the regional response as well as all of our intern, internal and external communications. Um, Reno Direct is an example of that. They answered over 67,000 communications this past year, all remote working. Um, that's over 250 communications a day that's being managed from their homes at this point in time. Um, in addition to that, during the Pine Haven fire, Reno Direct immediately stood up and managed fire response and communications for our residents, providing a hotline that they could call and get information about evacuations and other things they needed. Our community liaisons, uh, we lost Cynthia Asfarza early in the pandemic to the city manager's office. It was a great promotion for her, um, but it did cut our team a little bit short coming into the the pandemic. And then recently, we also lost, uh, Tess Opreman. Brad Fitch, however, working remotely, has managed to continue to support all of our council members. I think he has done an incredible job continuing to fill in for those positions. He managed virtual town halls for many of our, um, council members during that time. And earlier this year, I think you all heard, um, he also was able to stand up and implement the Stay Home For Reno program over the holidays to encourage safe outdoor activities. So he did all of those things while still managing to support our, um, council, our council members. In addition to that, our communications team, which is made up of John, Matt, Chad, and Natalie, uh, they had to immediately switch to regional information support in addition to ours. They've hosted over 40 virtual press events this year. They implemented implemented City Chat, which is a new virtual platform that we use for communications. We supported the Reno Fire Department during Pine Haven, the Police Department during the riots, the Clean and Safe Team, and all of our CARES Act activities that were conducted in that time. Our team had to manage the outreach and the engagement to that. So they've managed to pick all of those things up in addition to doing their regular, their jobs throughout this entire year and doing so remotely. So, um, I figured on the top accomplishments, it was a little bit harder to break it into just three because my team, um, what I've discovered this year, without hesitation, I have the best code enforcement, parking enforcement, and communications teams in the state. The things that I have seen this team be able to get done this year have been incredible and I just wanted to recognize that. Um, another piece that I that I did, um, was remiss in covering was our code enforcement, parking enforcement, and police department worked together this year and were able to remove over 50 junk, um, and dilapidated RVs from the streets. And that became a huge concern during the pandemic because we had a lot of people that began living in RVs in our community and that became a significant challenge for us in addition to dealing with abandoned vehicles. Really quickly going into our initiatives and strategies in the new year. Um, and I'm from there going to go into our additional requests because they are tied to our major initiatives. The first major initiative is to continue supporting regional response to the pandemic. Um, from a communications perspective, our residents need to know what's happening when it comes to vaccinations or COVID testing or mitigations of the governor's orders. And so we have to continue to participate in that. In addition to that, um, mitigation and or the enforcement and compliance teams will have to continue to support the governor's orders because we'll be doing inspections through businesses and special events as long as there are compliance mitigations in place. And so that is probably our number one initiative coming into the year. The second one, following on the collaboration we saw with code enforcement and parking to remove dilapidated RVs, also working to mitigate increased nuisance activities that we're seeing on public and private properties throughout the city. Um, some of this is related to camping and being able to take a more concerted collaborative event, uh, uh, strategy, you know, collaborating across multiple departments in our community to be able to mitigate some of the issues that we're seeing as it relates to camping. Um, our Clean and Safe Team right now really addresses camping in public environments, but the code enforcement team really is the one that's called when we're talking about camping activities in private environments. And so that team is, you know, working with RPD and working with the Clean and Safe Team to help mitigate some of what we're seeing coming into the new year. And then the final one really is on our customer service and community engagement. Um, with the pandemic, we've seen this strange shift into this virtual world, but we have seen an increase in demand from our residents to get more information. And we've seen kind of an increase in demand for customer excellence for our residents. And so focusing on implementing, um, standards of excellence for our outreach to our community and how we respond to our community, whether that is in a call to Reno Direct, a media request or whatever that might be, but it's establishing what those standards will be and then making sure that we're delivering on the need to engage our community on a regular basis across all platforms. Um, the pandemic has really created almost a wall for us because it's created this virtual environment. And so finding ways to create more engagement in a hybrid platform and being able to target residents who need the information related to upcoming, um, activities is going to be critical for us in the coming year. Tied to that, um, I believe, uh, if I could ask the clerk to switch two slides and go to the last one, what I'd like to do is address how our three requests fit to those three priorities that our team has. Um, that first priority, which is to continue to support the regional efforts related to the pandemic. During this pandemic, we have really seen an impact on our vulnerable population, specifically our Hispanic community and our senior community. We, early on, with CARES funding, were able to contract with Avet Contreras to help us with outreach to our Hispanic community. At the time, when you looked at total case counts for COVID-19, approximately 47% of our cases were from our, had identified as Hispanic, um, which was almost half, but approximately 25% of our community is Hispanic. And so that, we were seeing a disparity there. We brought Avet on to help us with our communications, to go a step beyond just translating and really find our Hispanic community and communicate with them through leaders that they trust, platforms that they use, and really finding the ways to communicate, um, information related to the pandemic. At the end of that contract, when I went back and checked, I had seen that we had dropped from 40% of our, 47% of new cases being Hispanic to down to under 30% identified as Hispanic. And so it really made a difference having a person come in and focus very specifically on that segment of the population. So going forward, our team wants to focus both on the Hispanic and senior population. And we have extended our contract with Avet and would look to be able to extend that contract into the coming year. Our goal would be able to have a full year under our belt, um, to understand the needs of that position and then come back in the next budget cycle to be able to do a position request and better understand what, um, services would be used, what types of hours and what types of needs would be met with that. Uh, the second one, as it ties to, um, our third goal of better communications, is a replacement of our work management system. We currently utilize Q Alert for our work management. Um, we do not have a citizen relationship management system at all. Q Alert has some weaknesses. It does not allow us to interact two ways with our residents. It also has some redundancy issues. Uh, it doesn't talk to a cella. So whenever we receive a request for, say, a, uh, uh, code case, we have to manually take that request after putting it into Q Alert and then manually put it into a cella and then code works through a cella. We have to then manually take it back out of a cella and put it into Q Alert. And so tracking, it's it's creating redundancies of works, but it's also, um, reducing our ability to respond to residents quickly because the information can't be found in one place. So when we get requests for updates, we have to make multiple calls and look at multiple systems to be able to answer those requests. And our hope would be able to get a citizen relationship system that allows us to manage both the workflow but also have two-way conversations with our residents. It would allow us to also use the data we collect, um, out of 67,000 calls a year to be able to come in and identify those that have specific concerns and let them know when upcoming agenda items are coming or when there's key things happening in their neighborhood. I think that would be critical for us. We did, um, carryover funding a couple of years ago to replace our CRM system in partnership with IT. They managed an RFP for that process. The system we brought in, however, did not communicate with the cella as they had told us it would. So we had to cancel that contract. Um, we have some of that funds still waiting to carry over, but it will take additional funds to be able to put a new system in. And then the third position is related to what we talked about, that mitigation of nuisances, is hiring a code enforcement officer. One, um, this is a request that is a repeat request as well. We had this last year. Um, and again, it's based on the fact that, um, we are already operating at reduced levels prior to the pandemic. And, um, we do have an increase in case numbers and an increase in demand that will come in the coming year, at least with requests from the governor's office. With that, um, we can go back a slide to show you. You'll see that our our request for this year, um, with everything outstanding from those additional funding requests, it's actually a drop in total funding for the department of 3.3%. Um, and I think that that concludes, and I'm ready to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Breckis, you're smiling and let's go to you for the first question.
Well, I saw Ms. Jordan had her hand raised, so we can go to her if you want.
Okay, well. Go ahead.
Okay, you know, um, great presentation. And I know you guys were so busy um, and probably had as much detour from what you were doing as as any of the departments. Um, a couple thoughts, uh, because you're both multifaceted. And I know because the detour, it's really hard to understand in my head where you're at in terms of your core responsibilities. I I really do believe that senior code enforcement officer needs to get reestablished because, like you said, some things have kind of fallen through. Um, I think we have growing parking needs and demands and we need some thinking there. And, you know, that was maybe parceled off on some other departments that I'm not seeing as much, like the parking program, the, you know, maybe we should have asked DP Public Works on that. Uh, the outreach, I I can, you know, just in summary, when I hear people say, I want a contract for this or a contract for that, my head immediately goes to, ooh, who in your department knows how to manage a contractor? I think a lot of times it's very easy for people to say, well, we're not going to have a position, we're going to have a contractor. And then no one in the organization has the time or the capacity to manage contractors, but it sounds like you have one on and you're doing well with that person. I just, and I I don't unders- I I don't in any way, um, uh, underappreciate the value of the outreach to the, um, communities of color that were, you know, uh, you know, to bearing a lot of the brunt of this crisis, essential front workers and so on. I just, I don't want to, us to do COVID work that should be somehow regionally funded or COVID financed. And I hope, I hope we can get there. Um, but, uh, and I hope it can be put in that way versus coming in next year for a new position to do something where I do have some questions about some of the media communications and outreach. I hear often, um, from people in the media, and I I think, you know, being honest, as long as I have, I have, you know, my own relationships, which is entirely appropriate. Um, I hear we're being fed stuff. I hear we're being fed stuff, we're not getting a lot of. Answers in timely manners sometime and so. You know, I I I'm uncomfortable in sending you off with more resources to do more outreach. If it's of that nature of, you know, messaging versus. You know, there's. People are in my ear saying they're not getting, they're getting too much messaging, they're not getting answers. But that is just, just, you know, feedback that hopefully is helpful. But other than that, I think it's been a very good year and your department really did pivot well and and. And great job, let's get you fully staffed is my view.
So we, just to give you an update, we are in the process, the hiring process with the senior code enforcement officer and the code secretary. So just wanted to let you know, we are filling both of those, we're just a little delayed as we were trying to get some of those other positions filled immediately. And the contractor, while we did use a CARES Act funding to contract with the vet specifically for COVID related outreach. Her contract with us now is truly just City of Reno outreach, so she has also been contracted by the Regional Information Center. To manage the COVID response specific to our Hispanic community. What we are working with her on is a combination of the Hispanic community, our seniors. As well as tribal and other minorities that that we work with on a regular basis, so it's it's very Reno specific. And it is, it is being managed by me, so she comes in and meets with our team. And we do keep very close tabs on her because I don't have that much money, so. We do watch what she's doing, but the the work that she is doing now for our team is very specific to City of Reno activities and not COVID related response.
Okay, I mean, it's not a big contract, I'm just trying to get my head around, is it messaging, is it PR, is it constituent work? Is it COVID? But okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Jordan.
Thank you very much and thank you Rebecca for all your work again this year, which. Councilwoman Breckus was correct, I don't think that any department probably consistently carried an additional heavy load like yours did and you did it. Really, really well and. Whether it was the safety messaging or the initiatives the city was putting out to help our small businesses. You really did pivot and and get information out as quickly as possible and I actually think from years past. I actually think the messaging that's coming from the city is far more streamlined and smooth than it has been in the past. So I I actually have a a varying view than my colleague on on that subject, I think things are. Are better in that regard and we as individuals obviously have like as was indicated, our relationships and we individually can respond, but. I've actually had some other communication that says stuff is, you know, working. Really smoothly and coming out consistent. With the overall, you know, messaging that the city. Is is putting forward as an organization, so I I give you kudos actually on that regard. Fully endorse the the additional. Personnel to support code enforcement, that is the number one thing for me, I have relatively remained quiet on. A lot of the departmental. Issues, this is the one that is huge to me because it impacts. Every every citizen and it is the number one thing that we are getting calls for service. And I just did want to say, and I know Alex needs all the help he can get to deal with the growing issues that we're all. Experiencing and and getting. Communication from our constituents on. And the thing about the RVs, just to ensure that we are coordinating with the county in recent meetings. There might be some movement on their front to help address that as well and certainly. I would imagine as their part of their component as they take over some homeless services that. But there's already been some discussions on that front, so I just didn't want to. Just want to put that out there in case you wanted to communicate with them to bring them in the loop, but. Good job to your whole team, I think you've done a fantastic job under. Pandemic circumstances and otherwise, so thank you.
Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, thank you. I want to echo the compliments of my colleagues, I I think your department has. Really produced during this pandemic. On you personally, the COVID committee that the mayor stood up attending those meetings. Setting up, you know, every other weekly press conferences, no matter who, I I mean, you were literally arranging those the night before. The day, the next day, getting all these doctors, you know, a. A quite a range, a panoply of doctors and specialists and health department people to come and speak to the issue of the day, dessert. I thought that was terrific, I mean, from like eight o'clock at night. Till eleven o'clock the next morning, you guys got the speakers, you got the talking points. You had messaging with the media, I mean, it was it was quite remarkable. And I've I've lived to see it, so I know up close and personal. I also, you gave a shout out to Brad Fitch and I want to too. I mean, he had, talk about flexible. I mean, he has worked for all of us by now. He, you know, he was Councilwoman Breckus and myself liaison. But during the pandemic, there there was a lot, there was almost a bit of a vacuum, I'll say in the beginning. Of what to do and where to do and he stepped right up with myself doing town halls, it was kind of one of those that people are demanding information. We set him up with Jason Soto, you know, our police chief with. Our Public Works with other members of our team to kind of showcase what they were doing. To manage a pandemic and those were terrific, they eventually transitioned into. Basically nab replacements because we had so many projects coming in, it's almost a. Counterintuitive that during the pandemic, so much was quiet, but development was booming. Booming and in my ward currently, we have ten projects alone right now that all are higher level projects. And so that brings me to the next point, which I'm very grateful that you've moved forward to get the liaisons filled. Because I really hope that as soon as they get a little bit of. You know, training, open meeting law training and some of those kind of things that we can reopen the nabs. The reason I say it, it is not just Naomi Doer, I mean, every place I go, people are saying. When are you going to restart the naps? When are you having the naps? I mean, and they could be Zoom, it's totally fine, we don't have to do them in person. It's just, we just need to have them and I I see Councilwoman Weber shook her head too, I think that this is something. You know, the people in the pandemic, they want more information, not less, they want to know what is going on. And and a lot actually has slipped through my own cracks, you know, so much is going on, I can't pay attention to everything, I don't know everything. And the nab for me is that early warning system. And I I shared with our city manager recently that a former council member. Known to most of us told me. That the planning commission did a technical and they called it legal analysis on projects, but the nabs. Brought the heart, heart to it. And that the council member's job was to blend those two, you know, the recommendations from the planning. Staff and the planning commission blended with what the the universe or our ward folks felt. And and kind of come out with a good project and without the nab to help me. It's largely fallen on my shoulders and certainly development of my ward has not cooled at all. Lastly, I just want to speak to to the point Councilwoman Jordan brought up about code enforcement. I think you know, this is like our number one thing in terms of constituent services, I mean. This year I was asked to do a lot of social services, right? Help with evictions, jobs, a new house, how to get unemployment, how to get unemployment. How to get unemployment, I mean, these were the questions and we really had few answers, but right up there with them was. You know, just a block from my own house, house with six trailers. Residents complaining endlessly, you've seen some of them, I mean, I try not to elevate too much past Reno Direct. But sometimes the people are just banging down our doors on the email, so. I just, I truly support that as well, we can't do more there in my opinion, so. I appreciate that you've included that on the list and I look forward to the year to come, thank you.
That's awesome. And again, we really appreciate all the services that you work with and all of your staff and. Our liaison, I have to say this as well, and he's been my liaison for a little bit. Not as long as the other two council members, but I just. I just appreciate all that he does and he's willing to just jump in and help out, doesn't complain like. Is this a fifth call you're going to make to me today? No, but. It's just so wonderful and and code enforcement, everything that you do in your department. Is really related to all of our residents, all of our business, all the community. And so it's just, it's wonderful what you do and keep looking for those grand ideas and keep moving on because you you do, you rock it. So thank you so much for what you do. And what you're.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
We will be able to, I should have put this in a phrase and a question, do you think we will be able to bring back the naps? Now that we have the liaison positions filled, I guess that's a question. You're smiling, but you're on mute.
No, I was going to say, I'm not sure if the city manager wanted to weigh in on that, I saw that he had come off mute as well.
Oh, okay.
We'll ask, we'll we'll put it on him.
We are, we are examining all of our avenues to restoring all of the boards and commissions including the naps.
Okay, well, the sooner the better so that it's not just, you know, one off town halls, that's what I'm doing now is one for everyone. And I'm having the developers do them, they're recording them, this for my colleagues. Recording them, they're summarizing the Q and A and then I'm sending it to to Brad, the liaison today. Jeff Borkart just asked for those, like we had one on Monday, there's another one tonight. And they've asked for them because I guess that's good information to go into the planning staff. You know, because that's how the public is getting, have input into these processes, so. I'm sending those, you know, those those reports, it takes them a few days to produce them. And when these town halls are done too close to the planning commission, they don't have enough turnaround time. You know, like they're being done this week, the planning commission is next week, really, they needed to have it maybe a week ago before they had to write up their report. So those are just some some timing issues that we're struggling with. And I would love, and I'll I'll put it right out there, Mr. Manager already knows, but I would love to have. Staff support, whether it's a planning person, a liaison and anybody. Sometimes I've had all, one of them I had Angela, Brooke, Brad and myself, that one was about a month ago. One on Monday, I think I had Brooke for ten minutes. I don't know that there's anybody planned for tonight's one. But anyway, I think it's better to have at least some staff person besides just me, so that's just, just a thought.
Thank you, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, I mean, on that note, I I think that. Before Mr. Thornley came and before COVID, we were looking at maybe doing a neighborhood recognition program where. Maybe we'd have neighborhoods register, I see more and more need. For technical assistance to HOAs, I have, I really work very hard and I don't have a lot of HOAs in Ward one. But I would like to see some, you know, along the line of mediation help, mediation, live in neighborhood services. A contract for helping out those problems, not in the attorney's office and and training, you know. To on mediation skills, my nab doesn't work as a mini planning commission vetting, you know, first off, because we're built out, we deal with. Infrastructure issues and other, you know, issues that a mature community deals with. But I'm pretty ready, if we don't get word in April on where we're going on this, to take it to the vote of the council. Yay or down? You know. Are we going to redo the naps, up or down? If we don't get word from the manager on how we're going to do it. I'm ready to take it to the vote of the council because. I'm also fielding those questions and I'm having a hard time. Understanding what my best channel to communicate with my constituents. Are, I can do very well, I can do calls all day long, emails to one on one, but that broader. You know, group, whether it's a block or an HOA or a few people, I've lost that and I just want. Going into the summer, some certainty on how we're going to do that, I still maybe miss. And this could dust off that neighborhood recognition program and and brief Mr. Thornley on it. But I'm ready for some answer in this next month on this, I know it's busy budget time, but I think it's. Bring back the workforce time, but I think it's time to answer some of these with some certitude, thank you.
Thank you, one thing I did want to ask Rebecca. If Ms. Venus, before you go off, is she gone? I think she's gone. Well, there you are.
I was gonna say, I think I'm still here.
Read to another. I did want to ask you one question and that was about your replacement CRM system. I I don't think I quite understood because it was. It was a cella before. And now that. I believe it was, what department? I can't remember which department that was talking about adding, it was Public Works, wasn't it? No, it wasn't Public Works, it's community development when they're changing their whole program now. And I guess they're adding more funding to the cella program to help out, would that not help you?
No, so so what we use, a cella is only the system that manages our code cases.
Right.
Because it ties into community development, that's where you find that that intersection between code compliance and building. What we use for service requests that come from residents is Q Alert. And Q Alert as a system, it was custom built for the City of Reno many years ago and it was before there really were three one one. Systems or workflow systems of that kind. And that is really all Q Alert does, is it will allow us to transfer a project from point A to point B. And point B to point C, but it does not allow us to have communications with those. Sixty seven thousand service requests a year that we do, it also doesn't speak to a cella. So when a resident calls in to tell us that they have a code enforcement case. We put a service request in, but then we have to take it out of Q Alert and manually put it into a cella. So code enforcement can manage it on that side, so it's speaking to CD. Then we have to manually take it out of that and load it back in, so it's creating a redundancy. It also creates a slowing down of response to residents, so when a resident calls to get an update. I can no longer just check it, right? I have to then call the code enforcement officer, get an update on what's happening, so it's really slow. Doesn't seem, yeah, but the other big win in the system that we like to look at is Salesforce. Really what would be a perfect scenario, and I don't have there to explain this. If a resident calls in to create a service request, right, for a code, you know, an next door neighbor has weeds, they want to, they want to file a complaint. We would collect their information and start to build almost an account for them. Hopefully at some point in time, they could pay a sewer bill utilizing the same system, they could play a parking bill. But they would have one login for the City of Reno. We could then, from a communications perspective and and exactly to what Ms. Doer is speaking to. If we have residents who have expressed concern to us in the past related to say. The 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 wild horse situation, right? We could then go into those accounts and we could contact them directly via text or email or something and let them know that a critical agenda item is coming up on a council meeting. So that they can get the notice ahead of time, so to really let us start to understand who our residents are and have a two way conversation with them. This system we're looking to do could do that. As well as manage that workflow and bridge the gap between us and code enforcement, so it's really meant to be a more. It's kind of like Amazon, when you log into Amazon, you can manage your Kindle account and you can manage your. You know, you can do all those things in one place and then Amazon sends you alerts when there's things that you care about. So I think it's really intended to take that type of a concept. And put it into more government service, it's it's a little unheard of for government service because. A lot of times government entities aren't as proactive. In that outreach, but I think our department sees value, especially during the pandemic, to be able to target people.
Okay, thank you very much and I wanted to know if the manager supports that, I I don't know if you said that.
I keep muting and unmuting, the PowerPoint that I received back from Budget Today showed that the manager's support was only for the vulnerable population position.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify it, okay, thank you very much, appreciate it, I think we need to move on, don't you?
I'm gonna add, since you just said that, I think all three of us are going to say, Mr. Manager, look at this code enforcement stuff. We really, really, really need it.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Yes, go ahead. Okay, sorry, but that Councilwoman Jordan, did you, yeah, she has her hand up.
Go ahead. Sorry. Thank you Rebecca, and I think one thing that maybe the group doesn't know either is Rebecca is kind of building a new model for how the outreach to our senior. Community is and how to loop them, which is such a significant thing and. And one that we have always struggled with because of the different platforms by which that particular population receives their information, so. I just wanted to give kudos to her for. Her stepping outside and finding new and creative ways to engage all of our different populations so we can keep them abreast. And I too, you know, want to see our various groups and nabs and things get going. As soon as as safely and adequately staffed possible and here here's where my heads at on that is. You know, kind of understanding the midst of the pandemic and our severely shorted staff. I get that, I think sort of what we're seeing now is in the absence of. Information coming out from our side, meaning the the city's informational forums. It 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 appears as though there are times when misinformation or incomplete information. Goes out and becomes the fact of the day. goes out and becomes the fact of the day, when in fact, it may not be fact. And then you end up trying to put the horse back in the barn or correct information, and it feels like you're always chasing your tail a little bit. And that's not a good scenario. So I do feel like we need to find a solution to, and, and again, maybe it is via Zoom, sooner rather than later, if we can, if we have the appropriate staffing to do that, because I think it's becoming an information issue that is, is actually rather damaging from a fact distribution standpoint. So I, I want to jump in and, and support that. So, thank you. And thank you to Brad Fitch for covering me in these last few months. Thank you.
Could I just say? I need a five-minute break, and also, you know, this is good conversation. I know we're short here, but it's good conversation because we are mewling over the operations. If we do get relief money, we kind of know where some priorities are and some unmet priorities. So I think this is useful conversation. I will mention Mr. Fitch. I think I've been the one who, he's staffed the longest, and he's done a great job, but I look forward to meeting the new liaisons also when they come on board. So with that, Madam, Acting Mayor, can we take five minutes?
I think we need to take 10 minutes.
Okay, and what's the next department, Mr. Thornley?
Next department, City Clerk.
Okay, thank you.
So can we come back at 3:20? Okay, thank you so much. Rebecca, Ms. Venus, appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, are you there?
Who's next up?
I think the clerk is. Can you hear me?
Yeah, what do we still have to do?
We're gonna, I think we're gonna speed through these, right?
Well, I don't know, let's go to the manager. I find this unfair with the lost day. I really, I really do. I'm willing to do another day next week. Because I don't want to shortchange anyone or anything and.
I don't think we're gonna shortchange where our city clerk and civil service and then, then we go back up and I guess we do the city manager. And human resources, I don't know, I, I, it looks like that's what we're doing.
The thing, the piece we're missing, I think we're gonna be able to hit all the departments. I think we'll be able to give all the departments the attention they're due. The thing that's missing is the initial presentation. From the finance director. And so the question really becomes, you know, we can take the feedback we've had at the departmental level. And we can incorporate that into Ms. Lochner's presentation. And, and show some adjustments and show you what we're looking at through the lens that you've just given us. And we can do that in concert with the strategic planning meeting. Or we can dedicate some time to just the primary presentation from the finance director. But given the difficulty in attendance and everything else. It may behoove us to combine it with the strategic planning meeting.
Well, I mean, here's my thinking and attendance is attendance. I'm not gonna say how people do their jobs because I don't want people telling me how they're, do their jobs. If we move next week. Then maybe people who just couldn't do it this week would go, or maybe they don't want to because they're not gonna be there anyway. I don't want to shortchange the strategic planning workshop. That is one of the most important day, times we convene together. And I guess my concern is the, the macro we missed, and I think that's really important. And then. The fees, I hate to say it, but the fee schedule, the capital and the debt, because you know, I got a binder that I picked up and read over the weekend. Those are important too, and the capital is always important to me. And, and, and I know a letter came in on capital from Ward one constituent. I don't know if the clerk got that, but. So I, I just don't know how you catch up those things.
You know, and I'm gonna, I'll opine here just for one second. I'm willing to do whatever everybody wants to do. I will say this, I know that from previous strategic planning sessions. It's very hard to divide our attention to something kind of global and planning to something kind of precise and money oriented. It's just mental shifting. You know, we kind of come with a mindset of dealing with big issues and to kind of then start open page seven and we're gonna go over the such and such budget. It's almost incompatible processes. I mean, I'm willing to do whatever everybody wants, even call in next week if I can. You know, whatever we have to do, but I'm just, I'm just giving you my two thoughts.
I know, and my schedule is already booked for next, next week. I mean, it looks like it's bad, but.
Yeah, mine is too. I'm not saying that that's would be in any way.
Another question, what, the, the tentative goes down by April fifteenth. What's next? What are the next meetings in the budget cycle?
The next meetings as they stand today are the strategic planning meeting on the thirteenth. And then we have, and then we have the three workshops in May, and then you have the final adoption.
What are the three workshops in May? What, what days are those? And how much time is scheduled for those?
The same as these three workshops. Let me pull up my calendar.
Well, it looks like one is on May fifth. Looks like one is on May tenth and one is on May eleventh.
I think that'll be enough time. I, I do. I think that'll be enough time. I would just, my, my request would be that May fifth really be on those macro. And then we absolutely do a day, a day kickoff on the CIP. That is always giving short shrift. Particularly if we're gonna get some stimulus money. I know I keep talking about it and want to get people's hopes up, but, and you've got some big, big. You know, considerations on the capital that I don't think, I, I think they need to get publicly vetted and I think they need their time. So. I, I'm fine closing out today with the departments, but I would really like the fifth on the macro and the tenth on the CIP. And any refinements then. That's, that's me, you know, thinking.
I have a meeting set on Friday with the finance director and her team to talk about the outcomes of these meetings. And we'll make a recommendation on, on what we need to make sure that you have the information you need to make good decisions in the adoption of the budget.
Okay.
Thank you. And should we get started here? I think we already have been started. So is Madam Clerk ready to give her presentation?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, transitioning over to my presentation at this time.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Vice Mayor and Council, City Clerk reporting here. As you are aware, we have a small but mighty department in the City Clerk's office. We are often referred to as the nerve center of the City of Reno and many constituents. Only access with their government is through our office. We're comprised of eight FTEs split into three divisions. Our core services, the first and foremost, as you are all aware, is council support. The City Clerk staff supports all of the council meetings. Processing all of the resolutions, ordinances, contracts, agreements, boards, commissions, appeals, and everything else as it relates to council. Additionally, we are the central repository for all cash and all processing of payments throughout the city. Lastly, we oversee records management pursuant to charter. We are in charge and the primary point of entry and exit for all public records requests received at the City of Reno. Which come in excess of over eighteen to nineteen thousand public records requests per year depending. Additionally. We are the maintainer of the official record. We oversee retention and destruction of the city records. And also oversee other policy management and training as relates to records. Our top accomplishments for last year, one that we are quite proud of and were able to maximize a small portion of CARES funds in which we believe will have maximum output. There is now a public search module allowing access for citizens to be able to access tens of thousands of our documents that have already been digitized. The hope for this is that we are in a position to be able to push more information out instead of having to pull more information. As council is aware, there is no dedicated staff in the City of Reno to responding to these nineteen thousand public records requests that we get in. So the idea is more information will be available to constituents as it is digitized. Additionally, this last year, we implemented the retention schedule that council previously adopted and have been destroying documents that are past their retention. Additionally, we have increased our access to constituents during this pandemic. Council will note that though we are not in person, we have opened up additional access points for public comment. And meeting over meeting, we are actually receiving more written public comments than we ever have before. Our major initiatives for the upcoming year is the on-base conversion. Council supported the implementation of a new digital management document system. A few years back after our previous win was going through catastrophic failure. Our goal is to have the rest of the city onto this program and launched. Initially, we are in the process of digitizing our records. We have thousands and thousands of boxes and looking at over five million images that are not digitized at this point. Previously, we were going to be launching a new public records platform. Our office has decided to pivot on this. We will be maintaining our existing one, but working with our vendor. And hoping to have some better access for constituents for those other records as we mentioned. Our financial summary, as you can see, the City Clerk's budget is small. We're coming in with a decrease of year over year. The additional funding requests, our top priority is a records technician at this time. As was noted, there are no staff available to answer public records requests. One thing that we were very fortunate and appreciative of council support is we were able to reclass an existing opening position and implementing a records manager whom we brought on six months ago. It is the first time that the City of Reno has had a records manager in nearly a decade, which is sharply in contrast to a city of our size. So we're excited for her to be on and really working on innovating and moving us away from archaic systems. But in order to do that, she does need the support for the digitization of the records and the maintenance of existing things. Second request is digitization of historical records. As was noted, we have tens and tens of thousands of documents, up in the millions of documents on microfiche. Additional digitization is necessary. The last request is for a boards and commissions administrator. As council has noted, boards and commissions have been some on hiatus, some have still been meeting as is required if they have statutory requirements to do so. We find that boards and commissions are much like public records requests in that there is no dedicated staff to be able to manage these. Boards and commissions as well as public records requests fall under other duties as assigned. The hope for this position would be to able to coordinate everything that relates to boards and commissions under one roof and one shop in order to make sure that we are consistent and transparent to the public. And with that, council, that is the end of the City Clerk budget.
That's awesome. Councilwoman Breckus, you're sitting there smiling, so let's go with you first.
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. And I know it's been a hard year for you all to, you know, really. You're not IT, but you work with them and I'm sure they've got a story to tell, stories to tell too. But let me ask you, or let me ask our manager. You know, records are very important to me and I am so happy that we have a records management onboard. Haven't met her, but will. Now, records came up a lot yesterday when we talked about police, Mr. Manager. And I, I just, I'm really struggling. I struggle sometimes and I have a long, I've been with this organization for a long time. What is centralized? What is decentralized? We've always been decentralized in purchasing. And I, I'm not fan of it, you know, but what do you think on records management? Should we decentralize? Should we stay decentralized particularly with police? Or should we have more centralized?
One of the things I've been working with our finance director on is looking at options to centralize records management, purchasing things of that nature so that we can see. You know, what it would take to, to effectuate that sort of change. I think that the difficulty we have with records at the moment. Is that despite a broad public records law in Nevada, there are all manner of exceptions hidden throughout the volumes of, of revised statutes. And so it requires a certain level of expertise to respond to the myriad records requests that we get in a given year. And so building a robust records management program that's centralized is a, is a, it's a larger undertaking. And I think is, is at least apparent at first glance, but it is a thing that we are working on. It is an issue, of course, that is, is top of mind for me because. I agree with you, not just the volume, but the, the manner in which we respond to these records requests is incredibly important.
You know, that is very helpful. I, I see the complexity because, you know, it's creatures of state law. So I see an argument, strong argument for centralization in records. Now, purchasing, where I think Nevada is very liberal, I could see it going the other way, but it may have organizational practicalities, but. So I guess my question then is, you're not recommending to get this records management technician onboard. Are you recommending any over at PD?
At present, if you recall our conversation yesterday, there are a number of balls in the air over at PD and records management is top of mind. Now that said, the manner of. Dealing with records at PD is, is sort of distinct here in that we do have records requests and we have a high volume of records requests at PD. But the primary issue we have at the moment is the NiBRA system that the chief was mentioning yesterday. And, and that is largely data entry and not necessarily. Records response. So we're, we're looking at. A handful of options on how to alleviate that backlog so that we can stay compliant with the rules from the federal government.
Okay, okay, all good. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Dure.
Yeah, I just, a huge shout out to Ashley, attorney and her staff because I have. Personal hands-on experience with what she is dealing with. I see that we've gotten over, for example, I, I stopped counting. I, we might have twelve appeals right now on one project, Lakridge. She has to manage those processes. This is just one example of this week. I spent some time with her recently getting up to date with the changes that we made in Title eighteen and how they affect her office, just kind of working through those issues. So she's incredibly knowledgeable. You know, anything we can do, I personally have found the boards and commissions whole issue to be very challenging. Very challenging because they all have their own bylaws. They have their own membership. The membership terms are different. Whether they continue to serve, when a vacancy occurs until someone's appointed, or maybe they stop serving. Whether terms are co-terminist, whether they're filling other people's terms. There's a lot of complexity with all of these commissions in that they have different worlds. And she has to keep those straight and she's working so hard to work with the, and it's not a liaison, I'm just gonna call it a liaison for the moment, but the. Key person that's responsible for that board and commission to keep those things straight, you know? And I think whatever, I think she was asking for a person to just work on that. And is that how I read that, Ms. Turney?
That is correct, yes.
Well, I have to endorse it. I mean, I don't know if it's a full-time job, but I know it's a hot mess. I'll just say that. For lack of a better, more evocative term here. It is a huge challenge. So. The, the more that we can get that streamlined, maybe at some point that person could take on other duties. But right now it is, is not in a good shape except for the fact that she's putting order and structure to it. So that she notifies people when they're expiring in advance and enough time so they can reapply. And, you know, there's a whole process there and. What's different about it is each of these are people. So you're dealing with several, several hundred people, probably I would venture to say. Maybe on the order of three hundred people that are serving some role with the city. From a NAB to an urban forestry commission to a historical resources commission. Ad-hoc committees, charter committees, you name it, we have it, and those are almost all different people. Planning commission, I mean, the list goes on. And all of them have terms and have to be tracked and coordinated and recruited for and so on. So. I could support that. So I'll end it there, but thanks, Ashley, for you and your team, what you do. And, Mr. Manager, whatever you can do to provide some relief, I think it would be well served. Thank you.
Good comment. Anyone else?
Just quickly. Go ahead. This, yeah, this NiBRA issue, you know, I see a bid services apply item for PD. I see, you know, it's reduced, but forfeitures. So how to get that in that if it's on a contracted service is, is something I'm gonna be looking for as a priority of a service and, you know, these services and supply budgets. Are very rolled up. You know, a lot of times you have services and you have supplies and we've always let them be rolled up. But when I see these big numbers and I don't, and I hear these needs, but I don't see them in the service numbers. The supply numbers, you know, or service numbers is like, and I see, I read the accounts payable. I'm like, what are we, what services are we providing instead of these? That's, that's what, you know, I feel that we need to kind of query down. But Madam Clerk. You didn't mention redistricting. And I know that's a big job that your office typically takes in. I'm seeing other communities are already RFPing for redistricting services. And then also with Title eighteen being updated. Which is probably at this point still thicker than the administrative code. Where are we at on MUNI code? And how much? Is that service still working? Are you gonna, is that in your budget, on your service supplies?
Yes, Councilwoman Breckus, to answer both questions, I'll start with MUNI code and go back to census. So MUNI code is still included in our service and supply budget. The finance department gave us the additional monies that were going to be necessary for this calendar year, fiscal year, to be able to do the printing and updating. MUNI code is in the process of codification currently, so that will be coming through. It is available online in a PDF format, but that will be put into the regular format in the next month or so. They stated it could be sixty days. So there's a substantial cost with that, but it is one time and done. So that is included in the budget. The second, or, go ahead.
You're not looking at moving off MUNI code, are you? Because I think since I've been on council, we've never had the contract for MUNI code up before us.
We are not looking at moving off of MUNI code at this time. They are the general go-to in the industry and we've yet to find something that would be a suitable alternative. There are conversations with the community development department, probably in the next year to look at alternative platforms if something else out there exists that would serve our constituency better. But at this time, we are not interested in moving, but are open to continuing to discuss that. In regards to your census question, that is something that I've been working with City Manager Thornley on. In review, redistricting is coming. As council is aware, there are charter requirements that after every census year, there will be a redraw for the election. It is not specific as to what department it is in and it has floated throughout different areas throughout previous redistricting. So that is something that we will be working with the manager's office to identify which key staff should be working on that. That will be something we'll be bringing forward to council. Right now, our last update is we will not have that census information back until the very late fall. I'm hearing discussion of October, but that is speculation at this point. We have no further data. Just so council is aware, that redraw would need to be done as it needs to be in place thirty days before election filing, which starts March seventh of twenty twenty-two. Which means it would need to be adopted no later than our January council meeting. So that way, if anyone is moving for wards in order to run for office, they have that right to do so. So it will be a very, very short turnaround time of just a couple of months. So we will be looking into a consultant to help with that process.
Well, thank you for that, but I want to see the budget number. I mean, we know it's coming. It should be budgeted somewhere, right?
Correct. And that's where I believe City Manager Thornley, he and I met recently to discuss this. And that's something that we will be discussing in RFQ or an RFP. Figuring out what consultants are out there and then the cost associated because at this time. We have no baseline and no information in which to move forward because we're not even sure of what the numbers are going to look like. But that will be information and talks that will come to council for discussion.
Thank you so much. Okay, I, I just want to say a couple of things and I just appreciate our, our clerk and what they're doing. I don't know that I can support any of the requests only because we have to think about, on many of these areas, we have a flat budget. And sure, we do need help, but I'm looking forward to hearing what the manager is putting forward and. We did not ask on this particular one, and I know we were asking yesterday, but, and we've asked for on a few of these. Mr. Manager, or maybe I go to Madam, Madam Clerk, if you would suggest to, or let us know which of these, or if any, the manager is supporting.
The manager is not supporting any of the additional programmatic requests at this time.
Okay, so that's what I, I think we needed to hear. Okay, that's all I have and thank you. Keep up the good work and I'm ready to move on.
Vice Mayor? I put my little yellow hand.
Oh, yes. Sorry, I do, I do see your hand, but it's not in the normal place. Thank you. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Jordan.
That's, that's fine. Thank you to Ashley and to Nikki and to everybody in your department and that you have done a noble job during these tough times. I mean, you not only dealt with. Transitioning to, I think it was in, within. Not only in the midst of a pandemic, but when City Hall got severely damaged, including our IT. And all of our processes got disrupted. I think we had a meeting within five days of that, I want to say, or even shorter. And you pulled that all together and it was, while slightly bumpy, which was to be expected. We, we kept the business of the city moving and, and I appreciated everybody's efforts in super trying times to do that. So thank you for getting creative and, and finding a way. And I did want to say on the, on the records, I, I'm excited that we do have a records manager on staff. And I too wonder if, you know, with the volume of records, if there is an opportunity to combine with PD to, to maybe facilitate getting those records more. Digitized and in a manner that can be reviewed or put out. Nothing is as easy as everybody thinks it is, as manager Thornley put in, as you start to dive in, everything gets more complex, which is the nature of all things, it seems. But thank you for the, the public comment and the process for our city council meetings. I think you have done a great job with regards to that. I have actually heard from a number of people. That say, while at first, they were kind of like not, not familiar with how to send a email in or leave a voicemail. And now they say it's the greatest thing ever and, and you're engaging a group more consistently to have their voice heard. So I, I appreciate that. I think it has worked out really, really well. And I think it's, it's something that we may want to look at continuing in, as we move forward, whatever the city hall opening. Date may be for in-person. I think that those components really did expose. Folks to a way in which to engage, engage from their home and leave a voicemail to have their voice heard. And we still, you know, we hear it, we read all the letters and I appreciate those efforts. I, I really do think those will pay dividends as we move forward. So. Thanks for all your work and I appreciate everything that you do.
Yes, thank you. Thanks so much. Councilwoman Dure.
Yeah, I want to support something Councilwoman Jordan just said, and that is, I think that, I think it would be very useful to, to, once we come back together to. once we come back together, to continue having a Zoom option. So occasionally council members have to be away and they usually called in over the line and it's difficult to participate in the meeting. And having this option, if a council member's away is fantastic. Secondly, having the public be able to zoom in means that people that have a hard time getting down to City Hall but want to present in person or have their voice be heard, you know, provides them another option. I think that is really terrific concept personally. And there was, there was a second thing, I guess I wanted to say, and that was about just the other thing that she said, and I wanted to agree with both of my colleagues about this, is that I really truly think that the more centralized we have these records, the better. You know, because Ashley is really good at it and having a records manager and that's all they do really helps that. And then, you know, every department already has to interface with Ashley. If there's a request for documents or emails or whatever, she already has to interface with every department. Why not with the police department? You know, you know what I mean? I mean, if it's a fire department thing, I don't think the fire department is generating their own records, but I don't know that. But anyway, I want to support that concept. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. And I guess now, Madam Clerk, you can take us to our next.
Yes, we will go on to the next department. Thank you to council again for your compliments and I, quick plug because I have the microphone, so I get to do that. Huge appreciation to the IT department, supporting us through this transition and through this time with meetings, as well as my staff. As you're all aware, I could not do this without them. Our next department in front of you today is Civil Service, Barbara Ackerman. Your chief examiner will present her budget.
Thank you. There she is.
Good afternoon. Let me get this shared with you. So this, I'm Barbara Ackerman, Chief Examiner with Civil Service for the record. And this is our super tiny department of four. And we have been currently operating for most of the last fiscal year without fifty percent of our staff. We are up to seventy-five percent of our staff, so it's about three people now. But I do have to give a huge shout out to my team who not only like pivoted quickly so that we could provide remote access to testing, but also got out in the field in the fall to help test, physically test hundreds of police recruit candidates and just really keep the hiring and fulfilling the needs of the city's employment going. So small, but we get a lot done. Basically, what we do as far as our department is we do work first planning and development. We recruit, we fill vacancies, we manage kind of that personnel, bringing personnel into the city. And we also support the Civil Service Commission, which is an independent board, personnel board for the city.
Ms. Ackerman, do you have a presentation?
Sorry, I'm.
Did you mention that you had a presentation or, or not?
Did it not do, did it not come up?
It didn't, but Barbara, we can do it on our end for you.
Okay, hold on, hold on, I might really get it going. I don't know why it didn't.
Yes, please.
Okay, so let me, let me try it again. Because I'm talking and you guys probably think I'm crazy. Let me share that, can you see it now?
Yes.
I think it's, I mean, yes, we can.
Okay, so I'm going to skip ahead to where I was. So our tiny little department, what we do. And then, so this year, you know, a lot of of us think that civil service probably shouldn't have been very busy because we had a hiring freeze. We didn't add any additional or new FTEs to the city over the course of the last year. But well, we were, we were extremely busy and the big driving force to that is really to do with employee turnover. Last year, we experienced about twelve percent turnover in our classified service, which equates to about a hundred and thirty-five people, which really required us to go out and do about forty-five plus recruitments, which is about a recruitment a week. And there's a lot of things that go into a recruitment. And with the staff of, we basically had two people for the majority of that year. It was a lot of work that we were able to manage, but no, we were not slow. And we didn't get a break when it came to workload based on those circumstances. So to do this, what we did is introduce some new technology that we were able to utilize to access remote testing for candidates. So most of our testing did occur on remote, remote online platforms, which is something that we were not previously doing. So that was a huge move for us and we adapted to that very quickly when we needed to back in March and April. And then we also started piloting continuous testing, some of the recruitments that we have constant need for, like firefighter, police dispatch trainees and some others that are difficult to recruit for. And doing point in time recruitments just isn't getting us a good full list of quality applicants. So we're trying to move towards more continuous recruitment opportunities in these classifications. And we piloted that with firefighter last year and had really good results. So we are starting to move forward with that for our police dispatch trainee at this time. We also added, adopted some new rules, added non-career employees, created some gender, gender neutral language in our language and just made some of our roles more transparent as well. So as far as the things that we have coming up for us for the upcoming year, really just want to be in a position to support the organization's diversity initiatives. Continue to develop and improve our internal processes and policies. Focus on the modernization of our rules, which in the process of rolling out some changes right now and developing some customer service benchmarks that we can hit. But all of that really depends on our ability to have a fully functioning staff. So as far as our financial summary is, we don't, we did not see any need for additional funding to support our, our regular operations. But what we do need is an additional person. We need someone to perform the lower level duties of our department. Right now, that's happening from a temporary employee who comes and goes, or temporary employees who come and go. And some of our higher level professional staff performing the lowest level requirements of the department, like filing and answering the phone and responding to routine questions via email. And so what that does is it takes away our ability to operate efficiently. And it results in hiring delays for those vacancies that occur, especially those emerging ones that we don't see coming. And this additional funding request is supported by the city manager. And that is my quick presentation.
Thank you so much. I didn't see the same thing that you just put up on the screen about the new, the one person in our packet. I'm wondering why that was, that the last, oh, we'll ask Ms. Lochner.
So Ms. Ackerman did not ask for any person, but in our discussions about her department, we determined she needed one. So that is why there is something here that does not match your packet.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Breckis, would you like to start?
Sure, I just, you know, I'm liaison to the commission. And so it's been great having Ms. Ackerman on. I really look forward to them getting staffed. I, I could appreciate, you know, the Finance Department saying you need another position because somewhere there's a logjam. I'm not sure what it is. It's not on their end, it's the, we have too much turnover. Our, our turnover numbers in one of her annual reports was just, we've got too much turnover. And maybe, you know, this is upstream and we need to go downstream to Human Resources and Training to find out what's going on with the turnover. And maybe it's a destabilized agency with the top, you know, three city managers in eight years. But it's so expensive to have to do this cycle of hiring and recruiting. So maybe that's a start. I mean, Ms. Lochner, why'd you decide they needed the position? Was it to fill faster?
So having worked with Ms. Ackerman for the last couple of years and having had those discussions and looking at her department, super tiny, for the amount of work that they are doing, they are at that tipping point. And as you said, we had a high turnover during the pandemic, particularly in Police Department. So that is a much longer recruitment process for them. And they've had a series of temporary employees in that department. And, and that, like you said, that is very expensive to continuously train temporary employees when a permanent employee seems more realistic for that department going forward.
And as, you know, and as far as the turn, employee turnover goes, that's really the trend I think we're going to continue to see because that's the workforce in which we're encountering. So people nowadays are changing jobs on an average of every two and a half years. So regardless of how amazing an organization we are, our employees are going to come and they're going to go and that turnover is going to continue to churn.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Duer.
Thank you. I want to say something. I do know how hard you work. I mean, this recruitment, retention, I mean, this is your world. I mean, testing, all the procedures is really remarkable. I'm going to do my little out of the box thing for a moment and just to ask about this. Something I've thought about for the last six years, seven years now. Is it possible, I, I don't want to like have an earthquake here, but is it possible to consolidate Civil Service with HR? This is the very first organization I have ever worked at in my, now going on forty some years, that they were separate entities. And I understand, I did a little research when I got here about the seventies and maybe what was going on in Reno and what was the formation of the Civil Service Commission, why we had to have a different thing. But I don't know, we've, like to your point, we've progressed. You just said the workforce is so different, it's a two and a half year, let's just call it three year stay. I just think it's worth a conversation, not for this year, but maybe over this coming year to talk about, are there ways so that if you were together with HR, maybe you could help backfill? You know, if a position's missing, maybe they have some, a technician or someone that can assist you. I really don't know enough about how it works, I'm making no recommendations. But I am, the only recommendation I'm making is that you have a conversation with yourself, the HR Director and Manager Thornley about it. You know, just, just a conversation. And why? Because I've always seen these integrated very seamlessly. Let's take the county, for example, a sister agency right here. They, they essentially have the civil service function integrated with HR. They, they too have labor unions, they have the recruitment process, they have it all. So that's just a question and I hope no one is offended by me asking this question. But it's just, you know, a simple question. You always want to kind of question basic assumptions. And when you hear it's because it's always been this way, that's never a good answer for me. If it's because it works better, that's a great answer. But it may be, it's just, it's just a, maybe an opportunity to reevaluate because you, you've been here for a while, you see the workload, you understand the issues. We have a brand new HR Director, you, we would probably make a great team, in my opinion. So these are just some thoughts, Mr. Thornley. And, you know, this seemed like the right time to bring it up. So in public, with everyone here, so.
I, I actually would like to take an opportunity to say that I've had a handful of discussions with the Chief Examiner and she has a number of very good ideas on how to streamline this process and have a more effective civil service component of, of the organization. So I'm really excited over the course of next year and into the future to see what we can implement and see how we can, we can improve the process.
Okay, well, fantastic. And I know you have a very hard job, very challenging, Ms. Ackerman, on what you do. And you keep our workforce rolling, thank goodness. So I'm glad to hear you're full of great ideas also, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, I don't see any hands up, Ms. Breckis?
Yeah, I'll just, you know, I, I really do believe in the civil service function in our charter arrangement, being separate and independent. And the manager has so much authority, the mayor and the council, the mayor particularly is, the mayor is weak. It is the check and balance. The manager has a lot of ability to make his hires, they're not political appointees. He should be, you know, following guidelines for best hiring practices. But he has a lot of way to do it and the civil service is that protected way to make sure that we're hiring and promoting on merit, hands off from the political influence. I am just a huge believer in it and its importance. And I think it works for our system, I really, really do.
And I don't want it to be misunderstood because I am a very employee centric person. I believe in, you know, I've been an employee in government for a very long time. I've seen all kinds of systems work in different states. And this was the first time I ran into it. And it's just, it struck me as unusual and different. All those other agencies I had had the same kind of a manager type system where someone's in charge, an executive director, city manager, county manager, whatever. And, and still they seem to be able to keep their hands off, if you will, of the civil service process. But, and have an effective civil service process. You know, that's not about appointments and those kind of things. So there's just some thoughts and I don't know the right answer. I'm just, I'm asking a question.
Yes, like, just so that you're aware, that, that that idea was floated up by the commission a few, few years ago, it was before I started. And they had several hearings or presentations regarding that. And the commission at that time was not supportive of that kind of, of merging those two. But I do also want you to know that I understand that civil service has historically been seen kind of as a barrier to the direction of the organization. And my, or it can be like, kind of like, you know, it, it's, it's another hurdle, it's an obstacle to getting employees on board. And sometimes the relationships haven't always been the best. But it's been my priority to be as supportive of the organization and to make sure that our missions and our goals align well with the organization and that we support everything that you as are trying to accomplish with our efforts. And so hopefully that's helpful.
Part and parcel of what we do, assumed that those best practices are implemented into whatever we do. And that's how I look at it, not like it needs a separate, it should just be embedded in everything that we do without having to, you know. But anyway, we'll check it out, you'll think about it, I won't add anymore, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Duer. Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. Appreciate all that you are doing and great to hear about all the ideas and, and what we're working for. And Ms. Lochner for putting in the proposal for her and, and making sure that you believe that she needed another staff member. So great work and appreciate it. And we'll return to, thank you so much. We'll return to Madam Clerk for our next presentation and that, that might be something that Mr. Thornley will be leading us in.
That is correct, Madam Vice Mayor. The next section to be discussed today is what we are calling Administrative Services. This will consist of City Manager's Office, Finance, Human Resources and IT. At this time, I will turn it over to, I believe Dylan Shaver, as he is unmuted, so he will take it from here.
Mr. Shaver?
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, Madam Clerk. For the record, I am Dylan Shaver, Chief of Staff to the City Manager. And out of respect for the remainder of your time and the time of our team here, we have combined these last departments into one presentation. You will still hear from everybody, you will still hear the same information, but some of it will be, will just be a little more streamlined than what appears in your packets.
That's great.
With that end, I will share my screen. So the Clerk ably.
I think it's trying to work.
Dylan, we're showing that you are sharing your screen, are you on two screens?
Well, no, I, I, I'm not having an issue there, Madam Clerk. I'm having an issue in that my slides will not advance for whatever reason.
I'm going to go get my charger, I'll be right back.
Well, that'll do. Well, that'll give us the perfect opportunity to solve this problem.
And while that's happening, I'm going to log on to my phone.
Okay, so we'll take a two minute recess.
Okay.
How's that?
Sounds good.
Okay, well, everybody is away now. Ashley, are they moving for you?
They are moving for me, yes. So we can see it on our end, we can see it on the Zoom, so you should be set. So as soon as we re-congregate with a quorum, you should not have any issues.
Thank you, ma'am.
I am sorry.
That's all right, Councilwoman Bruckus, because Councilwoman Doer needed to reconnect on her phone, and she is back with us. So at this time, we will resume the meeting, as you do have your quorum back, Madam Vice Mayor, and Dylan, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Now that we are back again, Dylan Shaver in the City Manager's Office. We're going to overview four departments today, as I mentioned. The City Manager's Office that you know and love, where the primary administration functions of the organization occur, as well as major interdepartmental projects or things the council tasks the organization with that don't live in any particular department on their own. Like our sustainability program, like our intergovernmental relations, special events and economic development live, live up here with the City Manager on fifteen and a couple of different floors below us. Of course, the intrepid Finance Department that did such a great job bringing us here today and, and putting all of this together. It's not just budget, but wow, budget, where they manage the organization's accounting, the risk that we talked about earlier and how great it is to have that risk managing payroll. All of our fiscal analysis and support and planning that goes along with that, as well as managing the billing for, for our sewer utility. We have, of course, the Information Technology Department today, which provides all of our centralized and enterprise technology services, as well as our one-to-one help desk and, and user interface services, as well as managing just the, the physical infrastructure that constitutes a network. Even though we have moved so much of our network over in, to the switch facility, we still have a lot of things on site, whether it is, is network infrastructure or the computers and radios in our public safety equipment and elsewhere. And then finally, last but certainly not least, our, our newest addition to the team, our Human Resources Department and their new director, where we handle our employee and labor relations, our employee benefits, as well as employee training, development, and, and our workers' comp. These four areas we are, are presenting is just sort of the administrative support to every other department that you've heard today. And one of the reasons that we wanted to, to group these together and the way we did is that the, the organization has historically told only a partial story about the overhead required to maintain other departments. So previously, we would see, you know, we require X number of new personnel in police, Y number of new personnel in parks, but that necessarily sort of rolls up into Debbie's shop, into Brooke's shop, even up here to the City Manager's Office in a way that, that the organization sort of needs to support those personnel. And so it's easy to talk about, for us to talk about these together because the, the work goes hand in hand. In total, th- these four departments represent eighty personnel and just about twenty million dollars. You see here, the, the layout of the City Manager's Office. We'll just flip through these, the, the org charts haven't seemed to interest you much so far. But of course, the, the Finance Department here, the Information Technology Department here, as you know, we have a vacancy at the top. I'm pleased to announce that with the department's help and help from around the organization, we're down to a, our final five finalists for that position that we'll be interviewing in the next couple of weeks here. And hopefully we'll have a great new team member to introduce you to. Of course, the massive arm of the organization that our new director oversees over in Human Resources and the, the seven FTEs represented in, in that department. Between these four departments, there are, of course, innumerable accomplishments for, for the last year. We cannot, of course, overlook the nearly fifty million dollar project that the coronavirus relief funding that, that came into the organization was for Debbie and her team, as well as for us here in the City Manager's Office. For us to take in basically more than ten percent of our general fund in one lump sum. And we were given, I believe, a hundred thirty-seven days to spend it, as well as a thirty-page rulebook telling us how to spend it, required a lot of resources. And then doing it in, in accordance with, with not just those, but the policy priorities that you set to have a squad and do such great work in the community, did require a lot of effort. And it's something that everybody on this Zoom right now should be proud of. We also, at the same time, had to maintain the services of this organization, which required creating a, a sort of COVID compliant workplace. And the Human Resources Department within days had put together our procedures for how to manage a remote workforce, how to get folks home, and then comply with all of that new rules that were coming down through the state, through Congress, through, through OSHA, for how we can complying and keep both our employees safe and also protect their, their rights as we go through. All of that was, of course, backed up by our great IT infrastructure, which enabled us to send those folks home and, and to the best the, the, the organization could, not lose a step. And that's not just VPN or sending people home with their laptop and their monitors. You know, that is establishing sort of security protocols at organiza- and putting up things like cameras in parts of the organization where there used to be people, and then there weren't anymore. That included, you know, taking the municipal court and allowing their proceedings to go remotely. It also backed up the great work that they did down in the Community Development Department to allow for electronic documents. There's not enough time to, to talk about the, the size of the effort that the Governor's Bowl acquisition and the planning around that has gone. And, and not, not to mention the strategic positioning that hopefully the, that we will be able to do and that this project will enable in terms of, you know, handing this resource off to the county per your, you know, direction. And many conversations we've had here, I think Councilmember Jarden at the last council meeting brought up, we are closer to that than, than we have ever been in this organization. And this is part of what, what enabled that. Later on in the budget process, we're going to talk about the finance plan for the Molina Pool and the Public Safety Center. Great projects that council has previously approved that Debbie and her team have sharpened the pencil and found a way to, to deliver that in not just a timely fashion, but in a fiscally responsible fashion. And all the while, all of that's going on, like I mentioned before, normal business has to continue. And so IT, enhanced security cameras, deployed automatic license plate readers in support of our, our public safety operations, and completed radio conversions to sort of a single standard across all of our fire apparatuses. These are huge developments at a, a very, very difficult time. Just wanted to take a few minutes to acknowledge some of that great work. But an organization like this has to always be looking forward. And from here, we will kick to the individual departments to talk about the major initiatives and strategies. We are all looking ahead to FY twenty-two that I believe will benefit the entire organization. And that is, starting with our own office here in the City Manager's Office, building a strategic goal-setting framework, not just for council and your strategic planning sessions, but for our personnel, for our management team and for their teams, to really make sure that we are doggedly pursuing the goals that, that the council sets for us. That then integrates into a budget process that is results oriented and results driven, where, you know, the, the programs, it allows us to assess programs that may or may not be working or may, may not fall in line with your goals and make real-time assessments about how best to budget for the outcomes you're looking for, rather than the programs we've always had. Finally, we cannot overlook that, that COVID is still happening. Debbie likes to point out that, that billions of dollars have come into this state in terms of economic stimulus. The council directed us, we, we put together a five million dollars big business relief program. We see rental assistance, we just saw the governor extend evictions for another two days. Eventually, this stops. And we want to make sure that the organization that is the city of Reno is poised and positioned to help the community recover and ease back into whatever the new economic normal is after that, after the transition occurs. The Finance Department, we have Debbie Lochner here to talk about her major overarching goals moving into FY twenty-two. Debbie, take it away.
Sure. So one of the biggest projects that we are working on is developing a plan and providing some policy changes so that the city can move towards this more resilient budget that is, again, one of the City Manager's goals for us. You see on there the second one, restructuring of the city sewer bond portfolio. So we are looking at a restructure of the 2010 sewer bonds. But through our analysis, it may be what we are bringing forward to council for consideration is actually paying off those bonds and not restructuring them. So that's changed in the last week. So sorry about that. The presentation materials were already done. But the analysis has come through that, you know, the list of tasks to do that has shortened immensely. And council will be seeing a resolution on the twenty-eighth of April to do that. So that's not even a major initiative going into next year. I'll find you a new one. And then again, we are also implementing some new budget software, which will allow for us to really provide some dashboards for the council and the community to better understand our budget, as well as our capital projects and, and how those are progressing. So that is, is an enhancement that we are really excited about to be able to bring some more modern tools for the public and the council to track some of the things that we're doing and, and have some dashboards up on our public website. So those are the things that we are very excited to do. And we'll continue working towards making changes that allow us to be more efficient and more structurally balanced budget-wise, to become more resilient. So those are our main objectives.
Thank you so much, Debbie. Rather than just throw her right into the deep end, I thought I'd just interrupt to introduce to the council, Brooke Stream.
We just do, could we break between the, the functions? I'm, I, I'm, I'm tracking off my book. And I just, I don't, you know, I think if we could just do two rounds on each of these, then we could move forward. Is that okay, Madam Ma- Vice Mayor? We have, only have thirty-nine minutes. You need to unmute.
Yes, thank you. I'm sitting here and I'm going, yes, I, I, can we just do this last one, the finance one?
Yeah, let's do finance.
I, I know you have questions about the finance one. So could we just do that one? Because we need to try to make sure that we get through this too.
I think we can. I just, the, the question number one is, paying off the sewer bonds? I thought the Public Works Department said that we were going to have a surcharge on those sewer bonds that were, you know, related to the Verdi area. Is that idea out the window now? Can't hear you.
Ms. Lochner, if you're there?
These are the 2010 sewer bonds. So they were issued in 2010. The prepayment penalty period is over. So we looked at an analysis of refunding them, which would save us about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year of cash flow. But then looking at the overall analysis of paying them off, because the sewer fund does have the ability to do that without affecting operations, that saves us nearly nine million dollars in interest charges going forward.
Well, the Public Works Department has come before to us to suggest that because that was a major trunk line out to Verdi, that that would maybe be under a rate structure, a service line to those in that sub-area. So paying it off is a pivot, but also the rate structure itself. So I'll, I, I'm hoping the two sides of the house are talking on that. My, my next question is, back on your org chart, are you putting anything in for procurement or any positions?
Not for procurement. So again, that is one of the discussions that we are having as far as centralizing some of our administration. So we haven't put that in at this point in time because we haven't baked that one out to see what that looks like. So no, not at this point in time.
Can we see your org chart while someone else asks questions?
Yes, and that, that's perfect. And well, and I don't know who else is there to ask a question. So I would, I'm going to go to Councilwoman Doer. I'm sure that she probably has a question. If you can hear me. Okay, Councilwoman Jarden. I think it's difficult with the screen here.
I mean, I can say something if you want me to.
Oh, yeah. Did you have a question on, from the Finance Department?
I mean, I was like two departments back, but I, I, I know that, I just too want to say this team's done an incredible job throughout. I mean, look at what Dylan's done in terms of managing these coronavirus or this care funds and so on and so forth. One thing, I, I don't know what the world looks like forward, but I know that he started out by talking about the various departments that are under him, or groups or special projects, let's call it, things like sustainability.
Oh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Doer, we're just talking about what the Finance Department is. We'll go back afterwards, but we just wanted to be one question, answer.
I'm sorry, no, I'll hang up.
One, one last question.
I, I meant, I'll mute myself. I, I had a question for the other one, sorry.
Okay, we'll go back to that, but we're just going to do this right now. Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Bruckus.
How did payroll going into finance work?
That worked out very well for us. Having the, the combination of finance and payroll together and, and the, being able to give that direction to the payroll team as we've moved through that, it is, it has, they've blossomed. So they are doing very well in, in the Finance Department.
Okay, because that was the big pivot this year. Okay, I am prepared now to move on, and thank you.
And, and thank you so much. I think that was good that you could ask your questions then. Okay, so.
I'm gonna jump back in.
We're not ready to do that yet.
So on finance.
Okay, so, okay, take five minutes or three minutes.
I probably only take one minute. I just really wanted to thank Debbie for, she does so much. But I also want to thank her in particular for her attention to detail on these refinancing of these bonds, the, the ways that we can save money in interest rates. You know, I know we recently had a discussion about banking services, and she probably was a little disappointed that we didn't go for it. But I mean, since then, we've had some local banks come forward. Hopefully, they're offering us some interesting and good deals to be competitive. But I want her to know, I can't see her face right now, but I want her to know that while we may not exactly support her idea in the moment, that doesn't mean we don't support her. Maybe we just have a different view of it. And, but overall, what I like is that she's got an eagle eye on the whole darn city and our money, which is critical to managing our city. And that is what she really excels at. So Debbie, don't get disheartened if we don't do exactly what you recommend the first time round, but just keep doing what you do. Okay?
Well, thank you for that, Councilmember Doer. And I will just tell you that I do not take anything you do personally. You are the policy directors. And we, I just bring things forward to get your direction. And, you know, I am working diligently on that particular item. And we'll be bringing that back. I'm not sure if two weeks is enough time, but it will come back.
Right. I didn't think two weeks was really enough time, frankly, but I'm glad it will come back. Thank you again.
Thanks so much. Mr. Shaver, you want to continue?
Yes, ma'am, and I will reshare and advance to where I left off. I believe I was about to introduce you to our brand new Human Resources Director. brand-new human resources director, Brooke Stream. Welcome to the city of Reno and welcome to the Reno City Council. And please tell us what you have planned.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about the priorities and initiatives for human resources for the next fiscal year. So obviously, we are going to need to continue to successfully negotiate with our employee bargaining group. So over the next fiscal year, throughout the end of this fiscal year and next fiscal year, all ten of our contracts actually expire. So we're going to be at the table quite a bit in the negotiation process. We clearly want to continue to respond to any federal or local or state mandates regarding COVID and be able to be adaptive to policies and procedures with respect to COVID as well. We hope that the the light is at the end of the tunnel, but we know that there there potentially is still more to come. And then one of our main goals is to really to kind of take a look at all of our administrative policies with respect to human resources. Make sure that they're comprehensive, that we, do we need any updates? Do we need any additions? So we can make sure, you know, our workforce has clear expectations of what what we expected them and that we're very transparent in that. So that would include training on all of our policies and procedures as well.
Great. And that's it?
I think Councilmember Breckas had indicated she had a question if it's amenable to you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay, and I do not hear that, so.
Oh, sorry. I was waving my hand. I will put my little hand, yellow hand up.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, go ahead.
I had the chance, just happenstance of meeting you. I think I might be one of the only people around, so it's nice to meet you. I look forward to you being on board. I know it's a big job and it's always been a function that just has not been able to have the resources it needed. So the manager is not recommending any positions at this time, is that correct?
No, actually, there is a human resources technician that is in the manager request for the human resources department.
Okay, that's that's good to know. And then you have a vacancy right now? Is the training manager position being recruited for?
Yes, actually, I have two vacancies at this time. So our training manager position, which I think is going to be really critical to some of my other initiatives just around training and development. And you had spoken about that a little earlier when you were talking with Ms. Ackerman as well. So I think that that's going to be a huge priority as we work to begin to plan for as our workforce ages, as we have people leave the organization, we need to be prepared. We need to train people. And so that training manager is going to be really critical to building kind of a comprehensive program. And then we also have a vacant human resources technician. So we, the training manager position is posted now and the the human resources technician is in process.
So but you're really looking for two, because you're hoping to bring on, hopefully you can do that on one recruitment, right?
Yes, I'm definitely hoping so. I think that those human resource technicians are really going to provide paraprofessional technical support across all of our different functional areas. Right now, we've got three management analysts and then the labor manager really doing the bulk of the work in human resources. And so they need some support so that they can really focus on some of those higher level duties.
You know, I would advocate if there's any way, I know we don't set the budget till July, but if you're out for one to bring two on, if we can fast, you know, salary savings or something, I think that's a great approach because, you know, new director and and I think things have been kind of sleepy down there. Now, right before Ms. Newby left, she came forward and wanted the council to bring on a recruitment forum on a kind of a a contract services. She said, you're going to have a lot of high-level recruitments. And we know Mr. Thornley has some vacancies too. But the council balked at that time. I I it was kind of odd. I I kind of think maybe she was thinking about setting the contract before, and then she gave notice, but do you do you have the recruitment function in here? Have you rolled that in for the high-level recruitments?
Yes, when you look at, when we get to our budget requests, our additional funding requests, there, those were submitted prior to me coming on board the organization, but there are dollars that are being requested for recruitment consulting firms so that for those high-level recruitments as we as we need to go and like recruit for different high-level positions that we could allocate for those.
Okay, did the manager approve those? I mean, are those are those, you're in the request, but they're also rolled into the budget?
You know, I'm not sure at this time. I think that the only thing that I I've kind of been involved with is those human resource that the actual position request. And so I know that that HR technician is part of that request. I'm not sure about the the recruitment services.
Okay, well, I would advocate for that. I think it's just very important in this dynamic field to cast wide nets and make sure that, you know, Reno's on the map and we're fulfilling, you know, the diverse hiring that we emphasize that we want to do. And I feel I've always felt civil service was behind HR and now I feel civil service is ahead of HR. And there is a little bit of competition sometimes and I just, I just really want to make sure that we're we're doing a good job on on that level. But then also the, are you going to do a salary survey this year?
There are dollars that are being requested just in terms of there's a need to do any sort of ad hoc salary surveys, but there aren't any plans to do any kind of widespread widespread salary survey this year.
We're not in the middle of a classic comp?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, okay, thank you. We just haven't heard from HR much, so I really do appreciate it.
No, and I apologize. This is my third week on the job, so I'm still learning. I have a lot to learn. It's my second week in Reno. I'm excited to be here. There's a lot to do, I know, most definitely. And I'm I'm certainly excited to to kind of dig in and get started.
Yeah, that's why I think we should bring those on in this FY.
And we are happy to have you. So that's the best part, Miss Stream. Councilwoman Doer, did you have a question?
Not a question, but I just also wanted to welcome our new HR director. I'm ecstatic that she is here. Thank you, Brett, for joining us. Very excited to see what you do with the operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to you, Mr. Shaver.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Madam Vice Mayor. We would then close on the goals for FY twenty-two for the Information Technology Department. Obviously, especially now that we've had people remote, but data security is is a top priority. And they've been working to establish secondary data center that basically mirrors the current state of our network. So you had it demoed for me a few weeks ago where we can sort of grab a moment in time. Should anything come in and infect our system and restore to an entirely previous system across the organization. We've, in the last year, dedicated a new staff position to GIS work in the IT department, taking back that group to three people. And that will allow the organization moving forward to really take the 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 data behind GIS and as well as sort of the graphical interface behind it and expand it across the organization, not just for mapping cases. I had some great conversations with that team about even including it sort of in the agenda process, making everything we do here just a little more approachable. And then, you know, finally completing some of these open projects that have been open for a while, the clerk, I think, will insist that we mention the migration to OnBase. We have, you know, we're in the middle of the G-suite transition right now as well. And this will really allow for more records management functionality, which pegs to some of your previous conversations. Also, just sort of allow for more efficient IT operations once all of these platforms are consolidated. Do have the AFRs that you had asked about as well. So you can see here the city manager's recommendation for that new HR tech. This this AFR list came, let me start over. This presentation was prepared prior to the new HR director's arrival. So these AFRs were the AFRs that were submitted in your previous budget. She has her own vision. She has her own goals, as she discussed, but that HR tech is still recommended in the city manager's budget at this time. Additionally, there's a management analyst added to the finance department in support of the risk manager. That is a big job, as as you all know, and that support is will be absolutely necessary. And then this, the sort of second box there is that public safety data analyst that we talked about during the FIRE presentation. And that position also appears in the AFRs for the IT department. Again, as it was mentioned previously, the ultimate home for that, for that position is TBD. But the manager's recommendation, I believe, remains the same regardless of where it it may live. The financial summaries for these departments you will see across the board are essentially flat. We do see some reductions and some belt tightening that was done in response to COVID pretty early on in the process when the Finance Director asked us all for our own sort of budget reduction plans. And then realized that we had such good ideas that she could just roll those reductions forward and present to you a slight savings in order to keep this budget essentially flat for you moving forward. The, we we've seen some savings as well, just through the normal course of things. We've got a lot of high-level sort of retirements and departures happening, which does sort of allow some savings to to accrue to the organization. And with that, Madam Vice Mayor, I can answer the balance of any questions that you and and your council may have.
Thank you. Let's go back to the main screen if I can and let's go back to Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Shaver and everyone on the fifteenth floor. When you lose a city manager and you've got a pandemic and everything, it's I know the turbulence was rocking there as as much as anyone. So, you know, those who stepped up and, you know, kind of helped this transition, I think, you know, really, it was quite a time. I want to ask on IT, other than the director, who else is missing from IT right now? What other vacancies exist?
I don't believe we have another vacancy currently within the department. I don't, I don't have that at my fingertips, but we don't have an open recruitment right now. We did have that GIS slot open for a while, but it's it's filled now.
You know, in my experience with GIS, and I I have quite a bit of experience, although I don't know it. I think it's something that works best decentralized, to be honest with you, with departments from their different needs. But you need someone in IT to work on all the layers and everything. And the the metadata, you know, back there. So I'll be curious to think, especially if we want, since we want to add, grow it, why we're putting four GIS in IT. I also want to ask about our computer system at City Hall. When we go live, presuming we're going to be in our chambers again, which I've asked the manager to explore other options. But is that system in this budget to get fixed this this time? Because it crashes too much at City Hall. And it's not, to to my mind, flexible is, you know, where we need to be, particularly Ms. Doer said, if one of us calls in, even before the pandemic, if one of us calls in, you couldn't hear the person.
So what, and I I apologize because I I don't quite understand the context of the question. When you say the computer system in City Hall, you're referring specifically to the computer system that supports the council chambers?
Chambers, yeah.
Okay, okay. No, that is not appear in in, that upgrade does not appear in this budget.
Okay, I think it needs to somehow, somewhere get in there. I actually thought it was upgraded when we had to rebuild the chamber, so.
Okay, that's your comment? Thank you. Councilwoman Doer?
Which part of the budget would you prefer me to comment on at this time, Madam Vice Mayor?
I think you can go back to information technology or the manager's office.
Okay, on my tea, I just want to, I want to get some reassurance from our city manager that we're we're doing our best due diligence to get a new IT manager. Could he speak to that?
We are in the final stages of hiring a new IT director. You know, we have a series of final interviews with the the last five candidates. The end of this week and the beginning of next. So we'll have a, we'll arrive at a decision there shortly and we'll, we'll be thrilled to introduce you to our new IT director.
Okay, that'd be fantastic. Number two, a big initiative in the previous two years was to transition our IT storage over to, as I recall, out to TriCenter, maybe out to Switch. One of those places. I I just wondered, is it working? Are we liking it? Do we know?
So there there's two filters, and this is Dylan Shaver again for the record. There are two filters through which I can answer that question, Councilmember Doer. The the first of which is is, of course, the the user experience, which the IT department was able to basically execute flawlessly from our end over the course of the weekend. The other is is sort of from the reviews of our personnel who have to service that that backend, right? And and are actually putting in the the hours and the sweat equity on that project. And they report back that it is frankly, a lot easier on them, having it all centralized in in one place. They are are thrilled to show it off. I have a tour, in fact, coming up myself. And I am, I am sure that that team would be happy to escort a council member or two out there along with me or even on your own, should you wish to see it.
Okay, well, that is reassuring because, I mean, that was a big switch and it took like a year to accomplish, as I recall, or at least half a year. The other question I have, thank you so much for that. The other question I just had for Dylan also is on the sustainability. So we're down to one person. And I personally, since this is an area that I really care about or have put a lot of work into, let me put it that way, I I think everyone on our council cares about it. But it's something that I'm tracking all the time. I really, I would love to see us refill the position that we lost. And the reason is, is I'm out in the community and I'll hear from a wide variety of people. What's going on with the plan? The the city did this amazing sustainability plan. But you didn't, we never were able to complete the sustainability part of the Title eighteen update code. That's one thing. But second thing is, we had all these plans in place and programs in place with various private partners. And they they feel the loss. They're they're speaking to me, saying we had such a good thing go and we were doing this and we were doing that. So I feel that we, our program has lost something and I wondered if you had a comment or a way we could begin to address that.
Certainly. So there there are sort of two pieces of of what you brought up there, and I just wanted to make sure that that I addressed them both. And the first one you mentioned was about Title eighteen. Where council will will be given the opportunity to express to us their priorities in terms of all of the updates coming with Title eighteen. We've asked the sustainability manager to to work with the the planning folks just as soon as the time's appropriate to ensure that the community, not just the 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 building community, but the sustainability community has looped into that process. That that remains a priority for for that division up here, as well as I know for our folks down on the second floor. The second piece of that, as far as as filling the position principally, yes, we were able to luckily achieve some salary savings by keeping that position open for a year. And it was, we had actually held the higher position open for most of that time. The, now the open position remains the lower one, and I I believe we're going to give that program the opportunity to sort of mature in that configuration. And from there, see what resources across the entire organization need to be bent towards sustainability. Because I believe Councilmember Doer, what you advocate for here, isn't so much a program for just like a handful of people in the organization, but really the integration of that into the way the entire organization operates. And that's going to be really the the priority, I think, moving forward, not just in this community, but in all communities. Because it's it's one thing to have sort of a sustainability manager, but it's another thing to have sort of a handful of departments that are all keeping that top of mind as they operate.
So I think I read two things into there. One, I did not realize saying that Suzanne.
Councilwoman Doer.
Yes.
Ms. Up, let's go back and have the second round.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Breckus.
Thank you. You know, the city, could we put the city manager org chart on? It was a, it was a tough one for me to review because it had the whole city. Not just the, you know, when you see city, when you think city manager, because everything was by department. So I was looking for an org chart just with the city manager's office, but the org chart in there, now this is different. I didn't have, I don't think I had this one in my binder. So I want to go over this a little bit because I don't think I had it in my binder. I think I had the other one. So you've got the assistant to the city manager. And then the two people sit up front, and those are all filled positions, correct, Mr. Shaver?
They, yes, they are.
Okay, then you have, I see here two assistant city managers. Now, I thought the existing budget that we're operating under has just one assistant city manager. So I need clarity to understand if this budget proposal is proposing that we have two assistant city managers.
Yes, it is.
So how can that comport with what I'm seeing on the salaries and wages? Is showing it's dropping by seven and a half percent. How can we be putting a highly compensated position in there and not going up in wages, salaries and wages?
We have a handful of positions within the department that are, are filled by well compensated people who are retiring or, or leaving the organization, which gave, I believe, Ms. Lochner the opportunity to help us deploy those savings in a, in a more strategic manner than we have been here to perform.
Well, I guess I just want to understand because everything else had their priorities and we knew when a position was being added. So Chief of Staff, Chief of Staff to the Mayor, are there any other new positions or vacant positions in this 24 FTE complement?
So there are positions that had left the city manager's office for a short period of time and are returning. So for example, the, the property manager in the last budget, I believe went down to the Public Works Department, is now returning to the, the city manager's office. Similarly with our Economic Development Program, left this floor and is coming back. But there are no net increases to the, the staffing and Debbie, correct me if I, if I'm misstating that. To the organization. And so when, when, what you are seeing on those other slides are additional funding requests, which the city manager is not making.
Well, are you downgrading a position? Because I see Planning Manager is becoming a Management Analyst. What's going on there?
So that Planning Manager position is actually currently a Management Analyst position that is overfilled by.
Oh, overfilled. Okay. Well, I, I guess I'm out of time, but the sustainability position is, is vacant, correct?
Yes, it is.
So, so this involves a request for a new ACM. It has a vacant senior manage, the sustainability and an overfill of the Planning Manager. I think that needs to be resolved. I think budget time is the time to resolve positions. So that's just me.
And certainly it would be a higher priority. That particular member of the team is planning on retiring the end of this year.
Given notice. Okay. And then what, what about the position that Ms. Hill used to have? Which position is that?
So that remains the Senior Management Analyst. Which is what it was when, when Ms. Hill was here. It is currently held by Ms. Burner, who is doing an exemplary job, but we are sort of thinking long-term about the future of events in this organization before we make any long-term changes to that.
So she, that's an acting, okay. Because I knew her as the Arts and Culture Manager. I didn't realize that was a Senior Management Analyst. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Breckus. Councilwoman Doer?
Hi. Thank you. I, I, I was trying to follow along with the chart here, which I appreciated. And I have to tell you, it's a little, it's a little difficult to interpret with these names that don't reflect really as much maybe what they do. I mean, Public Art Program Coordinator, at least we do understand what that is. Senior Recreation Leader, but the Senior Management Analyst, that was very confusing to me. But I do see the Management Analyst Sustainability and that's what I wanted to talk about. Now, did we, did Suzanne Limfanti, is she in the Acting Senior Management Analyst Sustainability? Or was she promoted? Or I got confused.
So I don't typically love to get into personnel discussions.
What I'm just trying to find out is which of these positions is.
Suzanne Limfanti is the Senior Management Analyst that oversees the sustainability operation.
Okay, so my question then is, are we planning to hire, backfill the Management Analyst for sustainability? That's what my path of inquiry was, because I feel that this is such a big job, whether it's internal, external, with businesses, nonprofits, whatever. It's one of our, our core features of our master plan. It's built throughout it. It is one of our key five strategic elements, you know, before we get into our new strategic planning. But it has been for six years. This will be the seventh year. And so it's such an important function and it has now one person that does it. I understand it's spread throughout the organization and we're all thinking differently. But to actually make change, I, I think both positions should be filled. So I guess I can just register that interest.
Okay, thank you so much. Are there other? See.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, I see a hand up but no name. So it is Councilwoman Jordan.
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, do my thank yous for Dylan for the year that has been like no other year and you helping to get the CARESAC dollars in a equitable way to get out to businesses in such a, a way that was so, so helpful. I heard from so many people that that was literally the lifeline that they needed to keep, keep the oxygen on until they could, you know, get back to some level of open again. So I appreciate all the work. I know that was a Herculean task that you and others worked on. So kudos to all of you and to Debbie. I will say, a year ago, when this all started to occur, and I know we froze positions. I was one of the ones that was very skeptical that we were making cuts or freezes in a manner that we're going to be long-term, that we're going to have some negative effects. Meaning we weren't going to have some fairly substantial layoffs that we were looking at and other things. I will go on the record right now and say, I was wrong. Debbie did a tremendous job of going in and evaluating ways in which, and in all the department heads, ways in which we could tighten our belts along the way to make it through and keep everybody on staff. You know, to weather it all. So just kudos to Debbie. Again, back to Councilwoman Doer's comments about the 30,000 foot perspective and your expertise in that regard. Just huge applause, tremendous, just tremendous job. And, and, and to Doug Thornley, in such a short amount of time, you really have gotten your hands and your head around the organization, filling some super critical positions that during a catastrophic year, I was very worried that, you know, we lose one more person and that was going to be even more catastrophic. And you, you managed to come in and really kind of get your hands around it and get some critical positions filled. So I know that's a very big priority of yours. So thank you for all of that and good job, everybody.
Thank you. Councilwomen, I, I, I'm not sure. Let me go back to our Dylan, to Mr. Shaver and find out what, how timing is going right now.
I am your last presentation. I think you sort of laid out the, the, the next step Ms. Lochner will take in presenting the other pieces of the budget to you earlier today. I would like to get our personnel on here, home in a timely fashion, but I am at your disposal.
Well, no, I actually, I'd like to also ask our Madam Clerk if we have lots of public comment that we still need to hear.
Madam Vice Mayor, we do have public comment. However, you only have one voicemail to note. For general closing public comment on today's agenda, we did receive nine letters of support. Again, received after 4:00 PM, so they are for the Moana Springs. There are also comments for funding of the police and sewer system expansion. These have been submitted to council and are part of the record. And we do have one voicemail if you'd like to listen to that.
I think what I'd like to do is go back to Councilwoman Breckus and Councilwoman Doer one more time if they choose to speak. Three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. And I, I think you've done a good job with the dais today. So I. Um, we're not done. We haven't done the city council budget. That's always, that's one of the budgets of most confusion to me with the whole convoluted room tax situation. So I'll be looking to see when that comes up. Maybe we could do that, I don't know, first out the, you know, it is a, it is a department. Ms. Lochner, does this include a two and a half percent or two percent for the unrepresented salaries?
There are, so we typically build our salary projections based on the existing CBAs and add merit increases. For unrepresented, we do have a separate bucket of money. Because we were working towards a pay for performance program. So if that, that exists already as a payable, so it was funded a couple of years ago. And, and that is, if, if there was a salary adjustment for that group, that is where we would look to get the money from.
Well, just in, in feedback is, you know, I want to pay our people, you know, they're, they work so hard and, and any compensation, I really want to be able to support. I don't think we have pay for performance. I, I don't believe that has been existed. And I just want to call out what I find the discrepancy between pay raises on the CBAs, the unrepresented and the lifeblood of the Parks Department who are working on poverty, minimum wage salaries and how untenable I continue to find, feel and find that in this budget. It's my biggest criticism on the budget, which looks very good. I, I'd also like to ask our manager if he could, by the week's end, or, or Ms. Lochner, come out with a list of what you understand to be the request for additional information by the participants today. Maybe the people who aren't here are not, have not been on, maybe they have their own requests, they can marry up. But you're understanding what we've asked for, because I think we have asked for some information. And I'll just throw in that I am looking on the city manager's office for just a city manager org chart, a justification on two ACMs and the process for recruiting those, timing and so on. I see a lot of positions that went unmet, but I see a big ACM position coming in and I haven't heard, I had to ask about it. So I, I just would like to know about that. I don't, I'm not for it. I'm not against it. I just want to understand it. And then we were going to go through all the, one of the things I asked was all the positions that got reclassified during the year. Underfilled, overfilled, and maybe just the actings also. So with that, I want to thank everyone for, I think, doing a really good job. I would, I would, I wish we had that third day, but it was a very good job, everyone.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jordan, and then we'll go to.
And thank you. I'll be very brief, but Councilwoman Breckus brought it up and I thought it was a good comment to make is the, the unrepresented folks and the cuts in which they had over the last year, I think were, were something that we definitely want to be looking at. But I, I love the idea of the pay for performance. I think that is a, a great motivational tool for unrepresented folks to recognize great work in a, in an effective way. I know I've deployed it through where I worked in HR for a number of years and it was, it was a great tool. So I, I actually am supportive, administered correctly, it can be an incredible tool. So I'm just supportive of that and I am supportive of our unrepresented folks getting back all that has been lost in this last year to make them equal to the represented folks that didn't see a, a decrease. So those are my closing comments. But again, great organizational job, great leadership. I, I think we have weathered a tough storm, still got a ways to go, but I think we're on some solid footing now and I look forward to what's next.
Great comments. Thank you. Councilwoman Doer?
Okay, thank you so much. I will give a ditto. I want to echo the comments about restoring any pay losses to the extent that we can and also understanding where we are going forward. Are we looking at flat year to that point? We just never heard anything about global salaries. Maybe that would have been part of Debbie Lochner's presentation. And to that end, I want to compliment these presentations. I found them extremely informative. I think it's fantastic having each director or division director come and present their world to us. Share where they are, their accomplishments, their goals for the coming year. I think it was extremely well done, one of the best I've seen since I've been here. And I think that is attributable to both our Finance Director and our new City Manager, who I am reserving my final compliments for. You are coming up on your final six, your first six months. And you know, it's kind of that time, kind of the honeymoon's over. And here's the results of all the hard work that you've done. And I think it shows in this budget presentation. You know, I think you're getting your arms around our organization and how it functions and how the parts interlock. And having to make the tough decisions about, I'm recommending to fund this, I'm not recommending to fund that. You know, those are difficult choices that are left largely to you and for us to kind of evaluate you on. And we got to have our input today. I think it is hard to summarize all of the things we've asked for. I'll go back to community development, which seems like eons ago yesterday, when we talked about historic resources or additional tree support or just right up to the last minute, asking for additional support for the sustainability program back to where we were. So these are all hard things to juggle, especially in a year where income or revenue is very uncertain. But I am, I'm very inspired by what I've seen the last two days. So I thank you guys. I know it took a lot to put this on. And I've been very attentive to everything you've said and learned a lot here. So thank you, everyone who has made this such a valuable two-day session. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Doer. I would like to say also is that I appreciate the hard work that has gone into this from every department, putting in the time and the effort. And I think that we owe it, we owe you a great big, you know, thank you, kudos and what have you. But what I, I love the best about this is that the process that our public can go and look and see if they're not with us today. They will be able to go back and look into these meetings, the last two days of presentations. And they can find out for themselves what has been said. And so I really appreciate this opportunity for the public who will be able to come back and hear the comments and hear from our departments. And so, and Dylan, great job on this last, I, I just, Mr. Shaver, I have to tell you, great job and to our manager, great job and to all of you.
So, okay.
One of them. So, so thank you so much all. And we're going to go back to our. Pardon?
Oh, sorry, the public comment, the last public comment?
Yes, we're going back to the public comment. To Madam Clerk, could you have that?
Before we kick that off, Madam Vice Mayor, I, I would like to take just a moment to echo everyone's sentiments. And sort of relay to all of you just how much of a team effort it was to pull off the last two days. And while it's regrettable that we lost power and, and lost the, the 30,000 foot view from the Finance Director on the front end. I think, you know, it, it, it cannot be understated how effectively the whole team worked together to get both the budget recommendations and the budget presentation put together for you over the last few days. So thank you for your patience as we got off to a little bit of a stumbly, rocky start. But, but I appreciate your kind words and wish to tell you just how much of it is attributable to the entire team here.
Absolutely. Thank you. So Madam Clerk, can we go to the public comment?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor. Just to note for the record, as was previously stated, nine letters of support, one letter of opposition on various budget items. Those have been submitted to council. And we do have one voicemail from Chris Anderson that we will play now.
Hi, my name is Chrissy Anderson. I'm calling today to leave a message regarding the President and CEO of the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority, Mr. Charles Harris. I am leaving this comment at the Reno City Council meeting for two reasons. The first, Mayor Sheeby is the Chair of the RSCBA Board. And second, for whatever reason, the RSCBA does not allow public comments to be heard during their meetings, which is something that I hope the mayor changes in the future. Regardless, it has come to my attention where Mr. Harris recently attended and spoke at a Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce meeting while he was infected with the coronavirus. By attending this meeting. By attending this meeting while infected, Mr. Harris put all of his attendees at risk, including my partner who was there. To make matters worse, Mr. Harris did not wear a mask for most of the meeting, and he did not socially distance, which was in clear violation of the COVID guidelines for our state. We only found out that Mr. Harris was infected with COVID while he spoke at and attended that meeting through acquaintances of mine. The situation is being discussed widely in our community. So far, the RSCBA has taken no steps to inform the attendees that they were exposed to the coronavirus and are at risk of infection. Even worse, Charles Harris did not have the decency or respect to personally inform people he interacted with closely during the event that they are now at risk of infection. By not informing the attendees, none of them knew that they needed to get tested and self-isolate from others. Who knows how many attendees got sick at that event and spread the virus in our community? This has the potential to be a super spreader event, thanks to Mr. Harris's lack of leadership and decency. Mayor Sheehy, I'm asking you to take, to use your leadership role and have the RSCBA inform all attendees at that event that they were put at risk by Charles Harris, since he attended the event while infected with the coronavirus and did not wear a mask or socially distance. Also, I suggest you take disciplinary action against Charles Harris for acting recklessly by breaking COVID guidelines, especially while in an active infection and putting our community at risk. It is well known by our community that Mr. Harris refuses to wear a mask and has no respect for the state's COVID protocols. The situation is now out of control, and I hope quick and appropriate action is taken. Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, with that, we have no further public comment, and we would be looking to council for an adjournment motion.
There's a motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Breckus, seconded by Councilwoman Doer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. The motion carries unanimously, and thank you all so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. We are adjourned.